The order on August twenty eighth, can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Grunder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Howell.
Here.
And Commissioner White.
Here.
And we will have our invocation by Commissioner Bloodsworth tonight followed by the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father God, we thank you for this day, Lord, and I just thank you for this town, Lord, our first responders, Father. And with that mentioned, Father, I just ask that you be with those first responders that had to deal with that call yesterday up the country, Father. I just ask that you be with them, what they've had to deal with in the families, Lord, that have lost loved ones, Father. Just wrap your arms around them, Lord, and bless them, comfort them, Lord, and be with those that are injured. Just give them safe passage to good health, Father. Lord, again, just thank you for all the first responders and just guide us tonight, Lord, as we try to do the best we can for the citizens of High Springs in this city. For we're grateful to be here, Lord, for it's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the consent agenda? We don't even have one, even better. No special presentations, no unfinished business. We will move on to citizen requests and comments for issues not on the agenda.
David Lynch, L R N C H. I urge the city manager and the commissioners to think about our concrete streets. They're beautiful, they're historic, they're unique. I don't know when they were put down, but they were there when I was a child. And I was born during World War Two. So they were probably put down before World War Two. So just think about it. If you pave over those streets, you're paving over something that was put down before World War Two, probably. Moving on to some other subject, High Springs Brewing. The World Health Organization estimates that alcoholic beverages kill seven thousand people each day. And when the city manager and the city commissioners allow High Springs Brewing to use the High Springs name, they are contributing to the death of seven thousand people each day.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? I do have two letters that were placed up here that people asked to be read in support of our fire department, so I'll read those. Dear Chief Peters and members of the High Springs Fire Department, on behalf of U F Health Trauma Services, we would like to express our deepest appreciation for your continued support of our injury prevention and outreach programs. Your partnership has been instrumental in helping us reach and support the High Springs community. Over the past two years, we have successfully implemented twenty community events in High Springs. In twenty twenty-five alone, we have installed or checked over a hundred and twenty car seats, distributed and properly fit a hundred and eighty-seven bicycle helmets, taught four Stop the Bleed courses, and provided education to students at the local community school on three separate occasions. None of these successes would have been possible without the dedication and commitment of your department. Looking ahead, U F Health Trauma Services is excited to continue working alongside the High Springs Fire Department on future initiatives, including the upcoming Bike and Roll to School event and the Car Fit Program. These events, along with many others, will continue to build a safer and healthier community for High Springs and the surrounding areas. Thank you once again for your ongoing partnership and unwavering support with gratitude, Brian Dean, Adult Injury Prevention and Outreach Coordinator. Dear sirs and maams, madams, I want to offer my full support for the High Springs Fire Department. My work in the field of childhood injury prevention has provided me with an opportunity to travel this country and educate many first responders for over twenty years. Rarely do I see a local firehouse take on the burden of protecting their community's children as readily as the High Springs team has. This June, I had the opportunity to train three members of the High Springs Fire Department, and since then, they have had monthly car seat checks, ensuring that the children of High Springs and its neighbors are safer in motor vehicle crashes. This also allows the department to interact with their neighbors in an immensely positive and trust-building way. Losing this dedicated department and/or individuals would be an unmeasurable loss to the community. Sincerely, Matt Luzon, Child Passenger Safety Technician Instructor. Those are very nice letters. We will move on to new business now. Discuss, consider, and act on proposal by the Swamp Bots Robotics for the use of the Santa Fe and Poe Springs Room. Mr. Sweat, how are you, sir?
I'm good. How are you?
Wonderful.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jason Sweat, founder and president of Swamp Bots Robotics here in High Springs, Florida. Let me first start by saying thank you to everyone here at the city for the partnership that we've had over the last four years. Without that partnership, we could not have become the program that we are today. Some of you may know who we are, some of you may not. But for those of you who don't, we are the premier youth robotics STEM education and robotics program in the area. We started back in two thousand and eighteen as a mentorship program. We quickly grew into a full-fledged youth education and robotics program. Our sole mission is to bring STEM education and robotics to the youth of our rural and underserved communities. We do that through a number of educational programs and our competition robotics teams. Our competition robotics teams have represented the city in, ever from California to Daytona Beach, and most recently here in the last, this past summer, in South Africa, where they competed against eighty teams from around the world. The teams here in High Springs have been in the top three in the state for the last three years in a row out of six hundred and fifty-five teams. And to put in perspective, going to South Africa means, there's a hundred and fourteen thousand teams worldwide, and they're in the top six hundred and fifty. And that's how they end up in competitions like South Africa. So bringing a lot of awareness and representation to the city of High Springs. Since our official start as an organization three years ago, we've grown from twenty-five kids to just over a hundred and thirty this year and counting. And we haven't even closed registration yet. We might have to, though, at this rate. And it's posed a wonderful problem for us, and that is, where do we house all of these kids to continue doing what we do? We provide this program at little to no cost to the kids. Our program is completely funded through local businesses and donors and grants that we get from the Children's Trust. And so we currently use the Poe Springs Room. The city has been gracious enough to allow us the exclusive use of that for the last three years, I think it's been. But we obviously outgrown that now to a hundred and thirty kids, and so our problem is where do we house them? So what we would like to propose tonight to the city is to expand into the Santa Fe Room. And rather than just come and say, hey, can we just have the Santa Fe Room, we would like to enter into a rental agreement and contribute back to the city to help fund the use of the building and the utilities and that sort of thing. Right now, we do have a new donor who's come on board who's given us a little bit of extra money to be able to make this proposal. I know it's not a large sum of money, but it is what we have currently to help us kind of expand and keep growing. What we would like to offer is five hundred bucks a month to continue using the Poe Springs Room and then move into the Santa Fe Room as well. And hopefully that will help to offset some of the cost of the use of that building. Thank you.
I don't see where that could be anything better than, I mean, you guys are doing an amazing job, and that is a testament to the amazing people that we have in High Springs and the amazing parents. You guys putting them all the way to South Africa. That's amazing. We thought California was cool. When you guys go to South Africa, that's fantastic. I'm all for this.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Mr. Marshall, you had identified the Santa Fe Room as a potential location for the community outreach that the county wants to put out here.
So that would be a place that you could use. That's why I had, when this came up, we haven't made any decisions or guidance or anything on what you want to do with that Santa Fe Room. So that's why I asked that the robotics came and gave a presentation on what they're doing, so you can decide as a commission, what's the best use of that room. You know, you have a organization here that's ready to go and wants to pay to use the room, or you could work with the county to see if they want to put their community outreach out there. We could do that as well. It's kind of up to you what you want to do with that room.
I think finding some kind of happy medium would be ideal if we can. We want to continue to support this group. Obviously, they've done great stuff for the kids. But do we have the financial bandwidth to forego potential revenue and an opportunity to serve the community using the Santa Fe Room for the community outreach initiative? I know that the county commissioner talked about paying rent for that space as well, whatever space. Obviously, we haven't decided what space, but... I mean, I know that the size and the objectives of what the county wanted to do, I don't think we'd be able to be housed in the little yellow building right now behind Ace. They're barely able to fit in there, so I don't know if that would be enough space. You know, the old Boy Scout hut could be another potential. You know, I don't know. I don't know what we're going to do with that particular property.
Yeah, I'm not sure. As you all know, we didn't know the scout hut was even going to be repaired. It is now. Nobody else has come on board. I don't know if we're going to move forward. At first, when I talked to Jeremy and you guys, we weren't going to do anymore, but I don't see... My wife has different avenues than I'm thinking, but that's a possibility. And I guess I have a question is, are y'all going to have equipment in there? Meaning, can the county and them share the room? Because if you've got stuff in there, that's no need, nobody going in there.
Yes, sir. So we have obviously lots of robotics equipment and big tables that they compete on, that they practice with. So the stuff isn't super easy to move around, which is why we're trying to find a space that we can kind of have, you know, permanently, at least for a time being anyways. Because right now, we're having to kind of move things around on a regular basis, and it's just, it's not as feasible anymore with this many kids.
So can the community outreach, we don't know what size facility, like would the Boy Scout hut work with that and be shared with us as well? Is that how that progress is going to be made?
So the county is interested. I know the Children's Trust is interested.
They wanted to do a joint venture, I thought.
I think it would be both together, yeah.
So is it possible, because the scouts are y'all active at this moment?
Yes, we just started last week, back for the school year.
Because I know the Girl Scouts meet at the canoe outpost.
Garden Club or?
The Girl Scouts.
Oh, didn't know that, okay.
Is that a possible switch for the Boy Scouts if the county needed that space?
To go to the canoe outpost?
Yeah.
I mean, we can do whatever we need to do.
Would it be, the Boy Scouts meet on Tuesdays? I don't know how often the robotics team meets. Would it be possible going forward in the short term without really knowing what the county is going to want? Could the robotics team share the space with the Boy Scouts for the time being? They're pretty responsible.
I think the only issue with that is they already in the pole room, and so it's just easier for them to transition over to the next room.
We currently meet Monday through Friday. I have teams right now and classes that meet Monday through Friday, and some of them early in the morning on Tuesdays and even Mondays and Thursdays. So we're pretty much doing stuff five days a week and at least two or three mornings a week currently with what we have, and a lot of it is trying to adjust and move our people around to try to make it work. But we're currently in there five days a week right now.
Would that slow down with the addition of another room?
No. All it does is it gives me a place to house the kids. So we did registration in phases this year, because the programs start in different, at different times throughout the year. So right now, that's why I say a hundred and thirty and counting, because we haven't even finished registration for the two programs that start in September. And so will it slow it down? Not really. It's just going to give me a place to better place these kids so that we're not sitting on top of each other. Because right now, I'm having at least two, sometimes three groups at a time in the Poe Springs Room, which, when you have six or seven, ten, eleven, twelve-year-olds in there, sometimes it gets a little bit hard to function when there's, you know, three groups of those. So it just will allow us to spread them out a little bit more so they're on top of each other.
I don't think a hundred and thirty was going to work at the scout hut. I would believe that would be past the code of having that many individuals in that room.
Are all a hundred and thirty or not all meeting at the same time?
They're in groups of six to eight, and depending, and some of them, and there's things that they can do, but they're in groups of six to eight, and they're on the game tables for at least part of their practice. And so right now, we only have room to have like the four game tables in there at a time, but then that doesn't leave as much room for the kids. And so again, when you have four teams of, even say, six kids, that's twenty-four ten-year-olds in the Poe Springs Room. And this isn't like a classroom environment where, you know, the teacher's talking and the class is quiet. This is a very interactive thing, and it's actually student-led. So they're leading, you know, how they learn and how they take in the material, and so there's a lot of conversations that go on. So when you have eighteen, twenty-four kids in that room at a time, it just gets a little chaotic, so.
So if we give them the Santa Fe Room, and the Boy Scouts are gracious enough to move to the canoe outpost, and then we give the county and the garden club as well, move to the canoe outpost, and then we give the county this current scout hut, does that fix all our stuff? And then that opens up two revenue sources, because we get the revenue from the robotics and then we get the revenue from the county.
The garden club is in a separate room, right?
I know, I'm wondering if that can be combined.
It's a separate part of the structure, but it's two different entrances, yes.
Yeah, because I was saying, like, we wouldn't have to move the garden club, because isn't the Boy Scout hut about the size of the pole room? The smaller room in the...
I hadn't been in the pole room, so I don't know.
It's pretty small. I think if we were going to do something meaningful with the Boy Scout hut, we would probably need both sides.
And that's probably more what the county's looking for anyway. They're probably looking for a community outreach. They're probably bringing things or need to store things and have room for people to come in and meet and whatnot, so.
I think that with this particular program, it certainly meets the intent of what we're meant to use the schoolhouse for, for education.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I think in terms of the intent, you're there. Are we renting out the Santa Fe Room right now at all?
No.
No.
And they want it without any remodel, right? I'm sorry to cut you off. They want it without any remodel. They want it all with its flaws and all its beautiful paint and whatnot.
And I actually ought to give them credit, because they actually fixed the pole room, right?
Yeah, so last year, we came in with the city's approval. We painted, we repainted the pole room and freshened it up a little bit. And we would look to do the same thing in the Santa Fe. I mean, again, we're here to, again, increase this partnership and try to take care of the facilities that we have. So, you know, we might likely come in and paint and freshen it up and make it, you know, a little bit, you know, more inviting, but lighter and brighter. But, you know, we're not asking that they come in and change the carpets and all that kind of stuff. I mean, it's fine just the way it is. We just have to have a space to expand into. I mean, we've quickly gone from twenty-five kids to over a hundred and thirty in three years, and we're just, we're running out of, we're busting out the seams, running out of space, so.
What was our fees for the Santa Fe Room we were going up to? Is this going to help with that fee issue? Do y'all remember what we were setting our?
I don't think we're renting it at all, so.
I know we're not renting it at all, but we were changing the fee prices.
We did. I can have Diane pull it. What's the fee for the Santa Fe Room, the new fee? That's what I thought was two fifty.
Yeah, but see, we're not renting it at all, because like when we went back to that conversation, it's in the, it's a rate. Nobody wants it.
Right, right.
Somebody wants it, and they're going to fix it.
How much of the Children's Trust, were they wanting to help invest in that also? Because I know she had spoke here once before about investing in children's education here. So I don't know. I mean, it's definitely a plus for us to get something out of that room when we're not getting anything.
I agree with Commissioner White. It being the old schoolhouse, this program, I mean, the growth is fantastic. We have sports right now that aren't growing as fast as this, so.
It's for the kids, man. Got to do it.
This is, I think it's a huge opportunity for the city and for the robotics club.
Would we enter into a contract, like a one-year contract or a one-year lease?
You would enter into some kind of lease agreement, and you could decide the term that's mutually agreeable between the commission and the robotics club.
Currently, we renew a one-year lease on the pole room each year with the city. So we would look to do the same concept, same thing with the Santa Fe.
And the terms of that lease for the last four years has been ten dollars a year?
Actually, it hasn't been any. It's been zero.
Nothing.
But so we entered into a zero-dollar lease for twelve months on the pole room.
Gotcha.
And so we would enter into a separate lease for the Santa Fe Room at five hundred dollars a month for twelve months, and then renew it, you know.
Would you be leaving the pole room? Would you be exiting the pole room, or would you be renting both?
We need both of them.
Yeah, both, okay. Just need that for the lease.
My question to clarification, Jennifer Appleby-Parker, you said five hundred for just the Santa Fe, but you mean not two fifty per, for five hundred both? So five hundred per?
No, five hundred just, because right now, we have an agreement with the city, sorry. Right now, we have an agreement with the city that you guys have provided to us the Poe Springs Room. We just need more space. And we didn't want to come up here and be like, hey, give us more space, right? And so we wanted to at least offer something back for the use of the additional space. So what we're offering is, and listen, we can structure this two fifty for, you know, pole and two fifty for Santa Fe or five hundred for Santa Fe. It doesn't really matter to us how we structure that part of it. But we did want to come and offer something, you know, to the city to help offset the cost of having us in that building versus just saying, hey, can we have more space?
Do you guys interact at all with High Springs Community School?
So right now, this is actually the first year we've been in any schools. But High Springs Community School, the Letcher County School Board is a little tougher to get in, is a little tougher to get in with. We've tried. They have grants and they have programs for this kind of thing. They just have yet to get them moving forward. And I think some of it has to do with teachers and some of it has to do with staffing and whatnot. But we've tried over the last year and a half to start to build some relationships with the school board and with the school. We just haven't managed to get there yet. We are in a couple of other schools around the county, but we haven't quite got in that door just yet with them.
There's a teacher that's there now. This is his second year teaching middle school math. His name is Philip Riley. He's your guy.
Okay. I will.
He would, he's a really good guy, and I think he would be very interested in, you know, having some kind of relationship.
Certainly reach out. Again, the whole purpose is that the kids of our rural and underserved communities get these opportunities. And the opportunities that, and I wish I had all of my kids in here tonight like we normally do, but the opportunities, the doors have been open for these kids through this program have just been unbelievable. And, you know, we want to continue to be able to do that and to be able to offer it to more and more kids. But we've yet to, as most of you guys, we've yet to really advertise and go out and promote what we do, mostly because of space. Because we've grown from twenty-five to a hundred and thirty in three years with nothing, no advertising, no promotion. And if we did that, we would quickly outgrow everything we have, and that's, we don't want to be in a position where we have to then tell kids, oh, I'm sorry, we can't do this for you, after we said, hey, let's come do this. So we've tried to very responsibly grow with what we have available to us, and we want to continue to work with, you know, schools because they have space, right? The nice thing about schools is they have spaces of their own that we can get this program into. School whatever Letcher County is just a little bit more difficult to...
Well, I guess my question in terms of bridging that gap is, do you have kids who attend High Springs Community School that are participating in your program? Because that would be a good conduit back too.
Absolutely. We have kids, we have kids at every single school in the city of High Springs. They're a part of our program.
Sounds like you'll probably one day be there, but you need something in the meantime to get you through like a...
Eventually, yes. We would love to be in the community school. We have a bunch of kids who go to the community school. And we're just, we're slowly working our way, you know, down the different paths to get, you know, to reach all these kids, so.
I love it.
And we do, to your question about the Children's Trust, whoever it was, we do actually, they are one of our biggest partners, is the Children's Trust. They've been a huge supporter of our program. Actually, they're how the program started in two thousand and eighteen as a mentorship program. And from there, it's just snowballed into what it is today, but they are one of our biggest supporters.
And how many coaches do you have currently?
Thirty teams, two coaches a team. What's that, sixty? Roughly sixty volunteers who are there helping, you know, with the kids and helping the program grow.
That's amazing.
So, I mean, this is, I'm just trying to think, because we haven't really committed anything to the county. We're not sure what we're going to do with the community outreach. But if you had to have two locations, if you were in the pole room and at the scout hut, you would have adequate adult supervision to supervise different sets of kids.
Our program requires there to be two screened and fingerprinted adults with the team at all times. They're never allowed to be with just one adult, so, and that's just a child protection thing. So there's always adult supervision.
But if we got to a point where we entered into an agreement for a year with the Poe Springs Room and the Santa Fe Room, and then the county came and said, okay, we're ready to go, and we used the Boy Scout Hut and the Garden Club, and then for some reason that needed to change, where would we end up having to, do we have space for them if we had to make a change, is my question?
The space they need? No, we don't. If you're talking the tables, they've outgrown that Poe Springs Room and any other spaces are about that size. I just don't see anything that we have for the robotics team better than the Santa Fe Room. Now, if the county comes and the commission decides that they want to turn it into a community outreach, Kirsten can correct me if I'm wrong, but we would have to wait until the end of their lease, because they would have that lease, so.
I mean, in terms of accessibility for the public, having the scout hut right there on four forty-one as an outreach, I think would be great. But I just don't know if the commission is going to want to, you know, commit to that or not, but.
They got rent money.
They would have, I think, pretty good rent money.
And I was going to say too, I believe the issue with why the Children's Trust did not go with Elder Joy was because kids come in and out. So they wouldn't want to be with the robotics area, I don't think.
Oh, I got you. I got you. A different space. Got you. Okay.
And it would work out. Your ideal spot is to have both those rooms, same place, because you guys are going to move equipment back and forth and, I mean...
Ideally, I mean, listen, we've worked now out of three different cities in the county to try to make this thing work for the last couple of years. For me and my board, ideally, it would be nice if they were side by side. It's easier for us to... For me and, and my board, ideally, it would be nice if they were side by side. It's easier for us to manage. It's easier for us to oversee. Uh, it's less equipment having to be moved around from place to place. But again, it, it, you know, for us right now, it's, it's, we, we just need to come up with what's our next step look like? And, and what can the program look like with what we have available to us, right? Um, we'll be hosting for the third year in a row, the regional championship. We bring two to three thousand people to the area every year for the regional championship for this. Um, it's a huge production. Unfortunately, the city of High Springs does not have a facility big enough for that, so we use Legacy Park. Um, and it is, it is, according to the city of Lauter, it is the second largest event put on, only, only surpassed by the fireworks display on the Fourth of July.
Wow.
There's, last year, there was over three thousand people there, um, and we filled the entire Legacy Park. I mean, it, it, we, we try to do for robotics what. You know, the NBA does for basketball All-Stars. Like, I mean, we try to make it a big deal for these kids because this is the future of what our kids are going to be doing. Um, and so for us, we're just, we're looking to figure out what that next step looks like for us. And, and how can we continue to grow the program, support more kids in our community with whatever is, whatever assets are available to us? And, and that's kind of where, that, that's what got us here tonight, um, and so.
Uh, do we know when the last time the Santa Fe room was even rented leased? Anybody have an idea?
I could, I could find out. We'd have to ask, we'd have April's in charge.
It wasn't yesterday.
No, no, it's been.
Mike Ray really said the last time he rented it.
I would say it's pretty, it's pretty close to a year.
Yeah.
So, with this tonight, we give direction or make a motion of how, what are we doing here?
Just, you would make a motion giving us direction to negotiate a lease?
Yeah, I, I want them to stay in High Springs, so, um, I make a motion that we move forward with a lease for Swamp Box Robotics.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. I'll take any citizen comments. Properly moved and seconded. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Congratulations, sir.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna be painting that room, you let us know. We could have a painting party.
Hey, that works. Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate all, all the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business item two, discuss special magistrate services.
Good evening. Um, first and foremost, I'm happy to be here with you all. Um, for anyone that I haven't spoken to yet, my name is Kirsten and Danielle and I are, um, will be working with you moving forward to help meet all of your needs, so feel free to reach out to me. This is your special magistrate, um, contract. Recently, you all put out for competitive bidding on this position. Um, you selected the Gilchrist Law Firm. The expenditures from the Gilchrist Law Firm have been extreme. Um, the invoices have been much higher than we anticipated. Um, and because Danielle is such a wonderful attorney, she ensured that you had a termination for convenience clause in your contract. So, you have the ability to terminate, um, with thirty days notice to the Gilchrist Law Firm. That's our recommendation, um, staff's recommendation at this time. Uh, so we would, um, just like your direction on whether or not you'd like us to move forward with that termination.
How much higher? I know we probably anticipated some sort of what it was going to be. What is it?
The, I can get the invoices. We're, we were expecting maybe between the fifteen thousand dollar mark. We've spent way above that already. Just to hold two hearings for a two hundred and fifty dollar thing. It's the, it, the invoices, and this may be common with the attorneys, but. Tristan will write me an email and that will cost us seventy-five dollars. Then Catherine reviews that email and that costs me a hundred and fifty because she makes twice as much and then they send the email. It's, it's.
I like that.
We, we've been nickel and dime severely by this.
Mike, I know what my motion wants to be. However, if we terminate them, what's our next step? Putting it back out?
There are a couple of options that you have. Right now, my understanding, and please Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you don't have anything currently pending that you would put before a special magistrate. So, you could sort of sit on this for a little while and come back to it when you do need a special magistrate services. Um, alternatively, because you put it out to bid so, um, recently, under your procurement policy, you could pick the other bidder that you did not choose. Um, and direct our office to negotiate a contract with that bidder. It's up to you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, do we know, Mr. Marshall, if that other bidder has interest in?
They do. So Danielle reached out to see if they were still interested. They were the original staff's pick as well.
Right.
And, um, they're, they're interested in doing it and I'd, that's what I would recommend because we had such a hard time. I think we had to do special magistrate two or three times. And we got somebody who's interested and capable and comes, um, recommended from our, from Danielle, so, uh, I would. Staff would like you guys to terminate the contract and direct us to go with the, the other company.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am?
Please, please.
Chief Shepherd, is this the, the one y'all recommended, the one that's on the back of this paper? Is that the one?
Secondary choice you talking about?
Yeah, secondary gas?
Yes, that was the one we recommended.
That's the one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we terminate the current contract with our magistrate and move forward with seeing if we can negotiate with the other respondent.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Moving on to new business item three, discuss, discussion to give staff direction on finalizing the budget.
I apologize. I just sent Kevin the presentation. I totally forgot to send it, so he is not behind. It was my fault.
Good evening. Well, Kevin's getting us together. Just a recap of the issues that we're facing tonight. So, the issues that need to be addressed tonight because the budget hearings are September eighth and September twenty-second. We're dealing with a six hundred and twenty thousand dollar deficit in the sewer budget with no reserves. A fire deficit of a hundred and three thousand dollars. A no local app, option gas tax that's being used by the general fund and not the roads in which it was supposed to be used. Utility transfers to the general fund are too high. We taking count tight. You'll see the impact to the service level. We break down the cost for the residents and we give our best opinion on whether it's a long-term or a one-time solution. Keep in mind, Monday is a holiday, so this only gives staff three working days to integrate what you decide tonight into it to make that September eighth, uh, budget hearing. So, if you have anything that you need to change at that September eighth meeting, we'd have to incorporate it into the advertising for the second meeting.
One. It's been a long week.
So, during the scenarios, we're gonna, we eliminated, we had a bunch of scenarios and some of them, the community and the commission seemed any more supportive of. And some of them really didn't make that much of a difference. So, what you will not see tonight is it was pretty much a wash for the night shift for the police department. By the time we, all the money we would save, we would end up giving to the sheriff. So, we took that off. And we also, the tags office was only a couple thousand dollars worth of savings. So, it really wasn't anything that would help fix the situation. So, you will not see those scenarios. Oh, I got the clicker? I do have the clicker. So, the way you're going to see this, you're going to see the scenarios, what it is and how we, how we've graded it. So, this is if you cut no services. Only thing you're doing is raising the revenue, the rates to meet the, the deficit. So, this would require the sewer rate to go up twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents a month and the millage rate would have to go back up that quarter percent. Um, it solves your sewer and your deficit fees and this allows you to maintain your service level. It does not solve the problems of the general fund transfer out of your enterprise funds. To be honest, we're not going to be able to solve that tonight anyways. It's going to take several years to get those enterprise funds to where they should be. Cutting raises for staff. This is not a long-term solution, but this will get you through the year to allow us to look at it. You know, work for the year to come up with the solutions. If you cut the raises, you'd only have to raise the sewer twelve dollars and fifteen cents a month with the millage rate increase. That'll solve your deficits. And that will also solve your sewer transfer, the, the transfer to the general fund. But again, this is a short-term solution. This will only help you one year, so if you do this, we're going to be back here next year talking about the same thing unless you're not going to give staff raises next year. Let me go back one real quick. The total cost for the no cuts would be four hundred, two dollars a month. That'd be three hundred dollars increase in utilities. Um, that's on the average. The, um, fire assessment, you already raised twenty-seven dollars in that quarter mill increase of around seventy-five dollars a month, so on the bottom. The assumptions we made on this is a three hundred thousand dollar taxable value home. Give you an idea where that seventy-five dollars came from. So, if your house is less than three hundred thousand, your millage rate would decrease. If your house is more, it'd be more.
You said four hundred dollars a month?
No, a year, four hundred, two dollars.
That came out four hundred a month?
No.
I just wanted to clarify that because I know somebody at home watching heard that and it's going to be like.
No worries.
But, okay, number one, how, how long is that going to last? A year?
No, this would, this would get you running. It just doesn't solve the long-term problems you have such as. Uh, the local option gas tax not going to roads and your transfers to the general fund. This, what this does is makes you whole for right now. This solves your sewer deficit and this solves your fire deficit. So, you could run the city as it's ran today. If you raise these rates, we can run the city like we run today. This is not cutting any services.
Let me add four twenty-six. This does not, when we get to twenty-seven, nothing's going to stay flat price-wise. Our, yes, you know, you can always assume that the costs of things are going to go up. I just don't want anybody to be disappointed next year and go, oh, I thought we could just do this one thing and it fixes it forever. We also need to keep in mind, we are in a negative position with sewer. We have no reserves and we owe the general fund money. This doesn't address that. And I only say that because I want you guys, I want to be transparent. I want you to know what we're dealing with. I don't have a flavor to pick. None of this, this is all about numbers for me. So, I just want to kind of give you that frame. Like, when I put on there a long-term solution, yes or no, there's a reason. It goes back to the kicking of the can discussion. We don't have a good solution. And if we wait a year, we're not going to have another solution that's going to be any different than what we have today unless something crazy happens. And again, I'm not picking, let's get rid of fire, let's do this, let's, I just want to be realistic with everybody that we are going to have the exact same conversation next year. And we're already giving people a three hundred dollar increase on their utilities with this, which is fine. This works. The math works. But it doesn't solve the long-term issue of the utilities subsidizing of the sewer, not having revenue, uh, having reserves or the solid waste or the water. So, I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt. I just want you to have that context as you look at these things. And you can pick whatever you want. That's one hundred percent your decision, but I just want you to have as much knowledge as possible. I don't want you to come back next year and go, we didn't know. I just, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's why I was.
I just want to make sure I'm doing my job, giving you the information you need.
That's why I was asking.
If there's something you don't see, please tell us. I mean, we.
Because next year, what's going to happen is we're going to have to talk about sewer going up again because twenty-four ain't going to do it.
And water will probably need an adjustment by then and we don't know what's happening with the garbage.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question while we're here? Um, in terms of just solving this now, this gets us whole for now, does nothing in terms of building up our reserves, and this might be a question for Kirsten, with impact fees. There's a, it's a real tight line in terms of how we can spend impact fees. Can we put impact fees into reserve to use to, for sewer, let's say, in that enterprise fund? If we have a lift station go down, can we use, if we had reserves in there from impact fees, could we use impact fee revenue to make repairs on the system?
So, the way that you use impact fees is highly restricted by Florida statute. And it has to be reasonably related to an increase in need created by additional development. So, you're specifically prohibited from using it for repairs or maintenance on exist, on existing infrastructure.
It seems almost pointless to have impact fees because we can hardly use them.
So, the impact fees will go as new development comes in and that, those impact fees is what funds what you need to increase capacity. Impact fees need to increase capacity. Um, we can't repair existing.
I, I understand that even if there's a road that's parallel to a new development, you can't even use impact fees to repave.
No.
You can use impact fees to widen, but you couldn't use it to repave.
Correct.
I look at it similarly to the wild spaces money. It's new space, a new park, a new, it's not go back and do maintenance. It's, in my mind, that's kind of how I look at it. It is, except in this case with those general government impact fees, they're related to new development. As opposed to wild spaces, different. But in that vein, when you keep thinking about wild spaces, we talk about that quite a bit. It's about new things.
So, since we're talking about impact fees, I had another question. Do you know if we have a public safety impact fee? I don't recall that we do.
No, we have a general government impact fee and that can be used for buildings or vehicles for capital outlay. But we don't have one that would cover their budget and hold.
So, if we had a public safety impact fee, let's say we instituted one, we passed that and we updated our impact fees and we had public safety impact fees. Could we use that for when the fire station needed something new or the police department needed something new for capital improvement for public safety?
Impact fees are for things that have a shelf life of five years or more. So, you could use it to buy a new fire truck. Um, but you couldn't necessarily use it to buy something that, I'm not super versed in the fire department, but something the fire department might need that we realistically know is not going to last five years or isn't infrastructure-related. For instance, we couldn't use it to buy the paper towels for the fire station, um, things like that, so.
But if we needed a new police vehicle, because we've had expanded police force because of the growth, we could use it to buy a new vehicle?
You can use it to, to buy new police vehicles, new fire vehicles, new ambulances.
Or building a new police, I mean, I know we're going down a rabbit hole because we don't even have that, but I'm just trying to think of it overall. Thank you.
So, Mr. Marshall, what's that going to break it down far as monthly for our residents? Twelve, so that, go back to one, so that's twenty-four, twenty-five a month for sewer, correct?
Correct.
Per month and it, uh, and then we're talking about twenty-seven dollars for fire assessment?
A year.
A year. We already done, and the millage rate's going up to seventy-five for the year, correct?
So, correct. So, you would take twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five dollars. That'd be your annual cost. So, that'd be a hundred and two dollars? Did I do that math right? Yes, a hundred and two dollars. And then your utilities would go up twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents a month.
I know it's going to hurt, but we, we already know nothing's good about this whole decision. I don't want to keep not paying our people because, say, we go to scenario two. How many employees are we going to lose with that when they find out they're not getting a raise and we hold it for another year or another year?
And everybody else is getting raises.
Exactly. If you look on the maintained service levels, we, we really don't know because we don't know if staff, I don't anticipate staff's going to leave. Um.
But if they're not being appreciated in their job.
Right.
Why do we give them reason to stay here? So.
Absolutely.
I, I don't like that. We got to pay our people right. And like you say, if we throw somebody down in a manhole and in a waist deep in sewer, if he wants to leave for less, for more money somewhere else, why would I stay here?
That's right. So, this is one option that was brought up. So, this would run, your utilities would run you about a hundred and forty-six dollars a year, fire assessment twenty-seven, and your millage rate another seventy-five. This is cutting your personnel down in your fire from five per shift to four per shift. If you did that, twelve fifteen increase in sewer, quarter for your, uh, millage rate. Could this be a long-term solution? Again, we don't know what the expenses are going to be and, um. It could be. I think, I think that would be a long-term solution. But it solves your water, your deficit and also so, uh, solves the sewer transfer. We're, we're transferring three hundred and ten thousand dollars out of the sewer into the general fund. That's way too high. It should only be at seven percent of the total fund. This would solve that. You would make a. This would solve that, so you would make a little headway on that. Utilities, 146, fire assessment and your millage rate. The last one that's on there is cutting the fire department as a whole. You still have a 12.15 increase in your monthly bill for sewer. Your water, your solid waste would go down, but keep in mind the county assessment, the county's fire assessment is more. So in the long run, it would definitely, I, in my opinion, it would run most of your residents more money in the end out of their pockets, but it does check a lot of the boxes here. It's a long-term solution, solves your deficits, solves all your transfers, but you're not maintaining service levels. You would have to, we would lose control of the fire services and we would have to negotiate with the county with what the county services would look like. Utilities would go up $41, your fire assessment, that's what we really don't know because they have a completely different math, so I don't know what it's gonna look like, but comparing apples to apples, we use, actually, I think we used Wayne Bloodsworth. Wayne, we used you and your neighbor. It's identical houses, almost, same-sized lot, one's in the city, one's not, and the one that's not pays 250, 200?
Different.
Yeah, $200 different. So the money that the city would save would be great, but it's still impacting your residents. You, you're talking the high, this will cost the residents the most money with, with...
Not the most money. It depends on the field just. The first one's the most... It's money if you assume that everyone's house is like Commissioner Bloodsworth's.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying? And this one, this could be 200, it could be 700, we don't know. The utility piece of it's much lower because you have an opportunity to lower your water and, and solid waste. It could be higher, we don't know. But on the other ones that only raise the prices, number one, that's your highest price because you're doing the $300 utility increase and a smaller millage. But again, it, the last one, we really don't know. It depends on how big your house is. So we use that as a point of reference because that was a fact that we had, you know, with real example.
That, that number tracks with the same two properties I was comparing as well. There was 223 and 471, so, and pretty similar sized parcels, so it definitely, the county fire assessment is definitely much higher.
Yeah.
Mr. Marshall, I've got a question in terms of raises. To Vice Mayor Miller's point, I don't know what our personnel manual allows or suggests or promotes in terms of raises. If you haven't been with the city for a year, are you eligible?
So our person, our personnel manual doesn't show anything for us to do, so right now, if we, you give one, you, you give it to, to them all. We don't have anything in there saying you have to be here for a year to be eligible for the raise.
So we also, do we have anything in there that says if you give to one, you have to give to all? I mean, in the, in the, in the workaday world, in the private sector, you have an evaluation? Do you get a raise? Do you not get a raise?
Sure.
Um, I mean, can we do an amalgam of, you know, it's the lowest tier folks that I, I'm kinda holding on to. The department, the, the staff supervisors, the people who are in charge of departments, maybe they don't get a raise because they're pretty well compensated. Not that we don't appreciate them at all, but, you know, there's some other, I have a question for Chief Shepard, if I may, Mr. Mayor. We recently went to three officers on the night shift. Does the data bear out that that staffing level should be maintained or could we, because I, we already have an ASO deputy assigned to our area if we need it, but, you know, they probably aren't hardly ever here. But does the data bear out maintaining that staffing level or could we ratchet back to two through attrition? Like, I don't know if we replace...
I, I will tell you, I'm absolutely opposed to that. Not from a data standpoint, from, from a safety perspective. You say a deputy, a deputy is nowhere around here.
Right.
And so when we have three officers, we have two officers that are maintained for certain cause. And so when our one officer has to go to Gainesville or he's stuck at the hospital, if you have dual coverage, that leaves a single officer, it puts us at a great risk for officer safety. So, you know, I wouldn't say the data part, the safety part is, is what's, what's there. That deputy is nowhere around us, a long ways off.
Yeah, I mean, we, we talked about maybe going to ASO for the nighttime, and I just don't see that that is a palatable situation at all, in my, in my opinion.
That's danger.
But in terms of just for us staffing, have we found that we need three at night?
Yes, that's what I'm, I'm telling you, you need, that's when we, we brought that third dep, that third officer. Dual coverage, like I'm saying, if you have dual coverage, two, that, they can only take one call at that perspective. You know, a domestic violence requires two officers. That officer makes an arrest or DUI arrest, it takes several officers, hours. And so you're looking at three to four officer, three to four hours where you have single coverage of one officer, and that, that's a concern. One officer responding to a domestic, one officer going to a burger-in-progress call, and then being dependent on a ASO deputy that may be somewhere in Archer.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, it's not, it's not best practice.
And then in terms of the fire shift going from five to four, I know that in Newberry they staff four per shift. Why do we staff five?
We do that because we run two ALS units, two ALS response units. Newberry is just now transitioning, I believe, to ALS. I don't even think they're ALS yet. So what they do is they take all four of their staff, if they need their ladder truck, they put them on the ladder truck. If they need their engine, they run them with the engine. We run, we run where we can run simultaneous calls. Just today, we had three simultaneous calls. Both of our trucks were in two different locations caring for people in an ALS fashion. Also, when you talk about structure fires and things like that, there's a two-in-and-two-out rule through NFPA. If you're gonna send two people inside of a structure to execute a rescue or to start a, or to put out, put out the fire, you have to have two people outside that can go in and rescue those two people inside if something was to happen to them. If we go to a four-man staffing, yes, we'd have two people outside, but one of those has to run the truck and the other one has to run the scene. We would have to wait for the county to get here to have that second two, which means we'd probably have to wait until the county got here before we could go and execute a rescue or things like that. Fortunately, we have people that live close that when we do have to go to minimum staffing of four, which is, that's our minimum, when we do go to minimum staffing of four, people like Chris Tatum, Brian La, Brian Langston, myself, when we have a structure fire or anything large, we're all coming. And Chris comes from off-duty, him and his father both. So we're all coming to make, make up that difference. And oftentimes, I, I make sure that myself is available for things like that. If we go down to four, anytime somebody takes off, it would cost us money because we would have to pay overtime for every time we have below four, so...
Don't we pay overtime pretty regularly anyway, though, with the way we staff?
We do, but we only pay overtime to staff a minimum of four. The only time we bring in a fit, we pay for a fifth full-time personnel is when I, I need a medic or I need a driver to drive the truck. Otherwise, we pretty much staff five at mo, most of the time, so, does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of every corner possible.
Right, it's, it's, it's more for the, it's more for to, to be able to run both vehicles and provide that coverage for both, both, you know, both areas of town. Like, today, we had a call 272nd Street and then another one on 45. So we were able to break two people off from that call and were able to handle the other call down the street. That also saves money because we didn't need the county to come in and handle that call for us because we were able to handle it ourselves. So it's one of those things.
Okay. In terms of cost for wastewater, the grinder pumps, we've gotta talk about the grinder pumps, I think. I think we're at a point where we have to decide what we're gonna do with, with those grinder pumps. We, the city's been, been taking care of them for 20 years. I don't think the city can afford to keep taking care of them. I hate, I hate doing that to people who have grinder pumps, but at some point, I think we're gonna need to, to break ties there. What I would be in favor of doing with that, though, is, when we were talking about the fire assessment at the last meeting, there are people who can demonstrate a need to be exempt from the fire assessment. I would like for those same residents to also be exempt from grinder pumps. You know, if they can't afford the fire assessment, they certainly can't afford a grinder pump. So I, you know, the city, I think, would have to maintain some ownership there, but just for those that had demonstrated need. Would that be difficult to administer?
I don't think it'd be difficult to administer. We would just have to set up what the city wants the guidelines to be, the minimum or the, what the minimum threshold is for that, but we, we could, I just, there's no problem with that.
I'd care about why it broke, though. If they're just abusing it?
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
And they break it, then we shouldn't be covering that.
Absolutely. We're taking pictures now of the damage and stuff.
And I'm gonna tell you, I'm utterly disagree with that. These people had no choice when the city told them they were going on grinder system. We cannot tell them, "We're done taking care of that." I, I don't agree with that. This is what they were forced to do. We crushed their septic tanks, we filled their septic tanks full of dirt. They can't even use their septic tank. So now we're gonna just wash our hands and say it's the homeowner's responsibility? I don't agree with that. That's just my, my feelings, and my dad worked here when that went on. He's gonna agree with what I'm saying, it's because people fussed about having to go on this system. He had to tell people, "This is what the city has demanded, and that's what has been done." You cannot throw them people to the side today. They didn't like it then, but they were forced to go on it. So if we have to charge into a maintenance fee, that's one thing, but I don't see telling them they gotta be responsible for the grinder pump, so people are not gonna be able to afford to do that. And like I've said before, what plumber is gonna be in this area be prepared to fix a grinder pump?
'Cause how much are we talking if, if somebody breaks their grinder pump?
$2,000.
I had a, I have a grinder pump that I had put in by a plumber, so they're here, they work on them, it's...
Maybe so.
I mean, I agree that, that it's a, it wasn't a great thing, and unfortunately, this is part of the, the hindsight 2020, I think, but we've made people go on the sewer because it's better for what we have around here, which is our natural resources, better for the river, better for the springs. I understand the, the, I don't want them to feel like we're tossing them off either. I know, uh, Manager Marshall's mentioned to have us replace them one more time. As they go bad, replace them and then give them off. That will have given this city 30 years of taking care of people. That is the, that should be the amount that somebody bought back then and got forced onto this. At 30 years, they should be off their mortgage now. Hopefully, things get a little easier, but, I mean, I don't know how we continue to, to pay for this over and over again because it just keeps getting more expensive and it keeps getting worse.
And was it the price tag on that yearly, like, between repair, 360?
360,000.
That's our...
Yeah, but I'm in agreement with Commissioner Bloodsworth. I don't think that it's the citizens' fault that we've made them go on the system that they didn't ask for, because they definitely didn't ask for it, because I've lived here and they definitely did not ask for that at all. We, they ignored them, I won't say we, because we weren't sitting here, but they ignored their request, and the fact that they ignored it, now we need to make it right as the commissioners here. Now, I might have been a little bit more open to, maybe if we do have, could we do a thing where we pay the first so much cost of the repair?
Good. Sure.
Because we've got JC and, and, and staff out there repairing it as well as we're absorbing the cost. It's the time and materials that we are absorbing.
Correct.
So, you know, that time is valuable. Could we, you know, come up with a scenario where we build for the time and half the materials like Vice Mayor Miller said, where we had a middle ground? I don't know. I just don't know where, we can't use impact fees to replace grinder pumps.
Correct.
I don't know where we have a source of revenue...
We don't.
...that we're gonna be able to continue taking care of this.
Well, it was mentioned to do a maintenance fee on grinder pumps.
You mean on the monthly bill?
Yes, I'm, I'm good for that because, yeah, we do need to get revenue for those, and it needs to go in some sort of reserve fund for them to be able to repair these pumps or replace.
So we don't wanna take, we don't wanna buy them a new pump and put them on their own, but we wanna charge them monthly?
We gotta do something to maintain the old system because we still got 20 years of this loan.
I know, but if we give them to the people after we, we paid $2 million over the next however many years and replace all these pumps, they got over 30 years now, they've been covered by us, that's a, that's pretty good. And we don't, we made these other people go on sewer with the, the gravity fed, and there's no support for them if something's between here and the lift station that goes wrong, that's on them. And we made them go on it, and we, I say, I hear we made them go on it. It was for the right reasons, though. It's because a lot of these septic tanks are seeping into the ground and ruining the, the river and the natural ecosystem around here. That's an important thing to maintain, and that's a, if we're gonna make people go on, I think that's a pretty good reason to make them go on. And we're not leaving anybody out. It's not like we abandoned anyone.
Now, the gravity system, are we talking about the homes that had to connect this way? Where, by your house? By your house?
Part of them are on gravity, and then what they, we haven't done anything on ours.
I think there's legislation now that basically says if you have access to sewage...
Yeah, you're giving them.
You have to connect.
Well, I was saying, that's a little bit of different argument because when we were sitting here, those citizens that way actually said they wanted to go on...
I'm talking badly.
But these citizens did not.
Right.
So that's two different...
I gotta say, I, I agree. If we wait the five years or, you know, when they, we, we repair them and we give them that five-year warranty, that's a, that's a long time. I think that's, uh, I think it's about time to move it over to the homeowner. We've gotta do something, and it's, and it's, it's a rough decision. If we continue to keep them, another $360,000 next year, 360 after that, we can either give it to them, um, or, or like you said, do a maintenance fee, but we're still, they're still gonna be charged, they're still gonna be responsible to pay that, but we're still gonna be fixing it. So, I don't know, uh, almost 30 years, I think it's, it's, it's time.
We have 1,900 customers on wastewater, and roughly half of them are on grinder pumps.
Correct.
If we did a maintenance fee, we would not do that just for people that had grinder pumps, we would do it for anybody on the system or, or not. I just wanna make sure I understand what we're talking about here.
Well, I, I would say grinder pumps. I mean, if we're charging a maintenance fee for grinder pumps and charging people that don't have a grinder pump, that doesn't seem...
Well, it's a, part of the whole system, so I was just trying to understand what you were talking about.
I got you.
So if we...
I thought it was, yeah.
So let's say...
When you're not, when you're not on a grinder pump, you're on the gravity system, we still have maintenance of a gravity system, the lift stations and whatnot, so...
It all connects coming to the wastewater plant.
So, I mean, if we did a $2 a month maintenance fee across the board for 1,900 customers, that was still only net as $45,600 a year. That's a, that's a, you know, a very small, small bit, but, you know, it's something.
Yeah, in order to, to actually cover it, it would be $34 a month for five years.
Just for a maintenance fee? Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, we can't do that, can we?
Good Lord.
I got another question, I wanted to address this with Diane. I was looking at the, the number of green checks on scenario one versus two, when I see a green check on sewer transfer just by doing no raises. How much money are we talking about considering for no raises? What's that total?
About $250,000, and then when you add the millage to that, um, and the sewer reduction, that gets you, and let me back up a minute. So to get rid of the true sewer transfer, it's $310,000, and so that 12.15 covers the $310,000 and makes the sewer transfer go away. Then you still need to get another $310,000 for the true costs of the sewer, and the no raises and numbers two and three give you the savings to make up that difference, about $300,000.
So to make that sewer transfer in scenario one go away to a green check, what do we need to raise the rates up to get it to that?
You would need to add another 12.15 on top of the 24, 25.
So that'd be 36, 35, is that what I'm figuring?
Yeah, because the, to get to the 310, that 12.15 represents 310,000.
So let's just say, if we don't do that, do, if we did that this year, where would we be at for next year? Does anybody have that scenario? If we got that sewer transfer into the green, we get, what, one, two? We'd have four green checks on that board in scenario one if we went to the 36, 35, if I calculated that in my head correctly. What is that gonna do for next year? Where would we be at next year if we did that starting now?[1780.12] Cause right now, we should be at twenty-four, twenty-five making this decision to go forward to raise it, if it was twenty-four, twenty-five today, correct? Cause we're behind how many years of being there?
Several.
Several. So now here we are, gotta rip the tape off and pull everything out, when we should already now be deciding to go forward for raising.
I will tell you from the utility billing department's perspective and from my working at G R U for a long time, three hundred dollar a year increase to a, to one utility is unheard of. It isn't done. This is, this is.
No, but it's also not moving forward any year, correct?
And I just, I only say that because the twenty-four, twenty-five is already, that's three hundred dollars a year. And we have so many people downstairs that can barely pay a fifty dollar water bill. And they're on payment plans. And I don't know, I really don't have data to say twenty percent of our customers won't be able to pay that. I don't know. But I just feel like, I mean, to put that twenty-four, twenty-five on there makes me twitch just from.
Oh, absolutely.
I used to get screamed at in commission meetings for a three dollar a month increase. You know, I mean, that's just, it's a, it's a, it's a lot for some people. And that to me, I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just.
But we're also thinking now, with the fire situation that's gonna be with the new fire department, we're gonna lose more money next year by more data, correct?
We will.
From the county.
We, they will continue to decrease that.
So we're still gonna go up every year to try to maintain some sort of levelness on, on doing this. It's gonna hurt no matter what we do.
Any scenario you have, we're still gonna, I mean, the fire, only because it's such a huge drop, I mean, that's a huge recurring cost we don't have. That is probably the most stable, for lack of a better word. But any increases you do in any utilities are never one time. It's always gonna be, things continue to get more expensive. You give people raises, as the city grows, you need more infrastructure, more employees. So just in general, I don't know anytime I'm ever gonna sit here and say, oh no, it'll be flat for the next three years. Like that's.
Well, that's been a whole problem. It's been flat for too many years. And here now, we gotta make such a drastic increase that it's gonna hurt.
Just to turn around and make one next year.
Yeah. And to try to break so, so much just to look at the screen and just to break even.
Yeah, it's hard to look, it's hard to stomach thinking about raising it that much and then turning around next year and raising it again.
And the, and to raise it that much and not address our reserves also is like, I mean, believe me, I sit here and lose sleep over this, trying to figure out a solution, because if you're, again, it's just based on my history and the, the size of numbers, that typically if you're gonna do an increase like that, you're gonna be packing away your reserves. And we're just doing it to stay above water.
When you think about this, guys, we're gonna raise the rates to this right here. And then we send out these contracts or R F Ps for, for whatever we do, the magistrate, the L D C. And we choose the lowest bid and it doesn't even turn out to be what we are paying for. We should've went with higher bid. Well, cust, our clients or, I'm sorry, our citizens only see that we're spending more money for something we could've got done cheaper, but yet we're not even getting what we're paying for. So it makes it look bad that if we go with a higher bid, like Chief Shepard tried to go, wanted us to go with a different magistrate. Look where we're at tonight. We've had to drop this magistrate and go with what he suggested do that we didn't vote for in the beginning. It's more money, but now these other people coming in the back door and hitting us up and costing us more money. So any decision we're making going forward is near, it's not gonna be good for none of us. So.
What's the?
Try to break even tonight?
What's the water transfer? You know how much it is?
Water transfer is about three hundred and eighty-two thousand.
And then what's the sewer transfer?
The sewer is three hundred and ten thousand.
Solid waste.
And the solid waste is two twenty-eight, I think.
And then what's the other transfer?
The local option gas tax transfer right now is two sixty-nine.
So with the sixty-nine, can we put the rest of what we got with the L D C rewrite? And then that checks off another box?
It's only one time money though. It doesn't eliminate that going forward. So for example, the local option gas tax transfer, if you took the sixty-nine thousand, which I think the city manager mentioned that they were probably gonna need for the land development code, but let's just say for sake of discussion, that we use that one time money for the local option gas tax transfer, that plugs the whole, a small portion of it this year. But next year, we still need another two hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
But next year, we still gonna be back here in this scenario, so. That argument that we keep saying is really not an argument, cause we're gonna be back here anyways. So we got the money, so we all, we might as well get another check on the board, cause we're gonna be back here regardless. So I know I keep hearing that every time I ask this, but it's gonna happen anyways. So we might as well use it. And we're not using all of it, cause we got ninety thousand of it. So the rest you can, you can keep in case we need the rest. But at least get another check off of the board by doing.
It won't give us a whole check, cause that local option gas tax is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. It won't fulfill any of those one items. And the thing is that it, we need to be looking at this in a bigger pitch or scope, because the problem is every year for the last however many years, we've looked at it at one year at a time. And it's always like, we'll make it okay this year. And then the next year comes, well, we'll make it okay this year. I don't, I, I don't wanna have this decision that you have, let me tell you. It's, there's no good decision. But the problem is, we are a huge business, lots of money and lots of our taxpayers' money. And we have a responsibility to have a, have a stable financial picture. We don't right now. And so if we just keep doing one year at a time, if we had a, if we had a credit rating, if we went to a rating agency right now, they wouldn't even rate us. We don't have any money in the bank and we're in a negative position in sewer. That is not a healthy financial environment. So what happens is, what happens if, I don't know, we have a huge sewer leak?
Or a lift pump goes out.
Or a lift pump, you know, whatever. If we have some big emergency.
So everybody, so the reality is, we've talked about all three options except for number four. Number four is the long-term solution. So that, I mean, that's the reality of why we're sitting up.
And I am open, I do not wanna lay off people. I don't want that to be, that's not my responsibility. It's not my choice. That is not what I want, but I'm just saying, right, unless there's another solution that's similar to that, I mean.
We've talked about it up here. We've talked about the decisions that were made in the past. It's put us up here in this position. This is the hardest position. It's not choosing one through three. It's choosing either one of those or number four. That's why we're here.
Which I agree. I'm just saying that from the standpoint of, we keep saying, it's only gonna change one year. One, two and three are only gonna be one year solutions. So to just rebuttal what I say is, it's only gonna fix one year. So we might as well do something, cause we got everything, one, two and three.
Four finishes, fixes everything for multiple years ago.
That's, I'm just saying, but the one, two and three, even if we go up with those scenarios.
They're Band-Aids. They're Band-Aids. We'll be, we'll be back here. And number four's still gonna be there next year. It's still gonna be an option. So we've gotta come up with something.
We can't cut staff, in my opinion. This, this community turned up in huge numbers to support their police and fire department last week. That was a pretty overwhelming message that I take away from last week's meeting. And we're pretty lean in terms of staffing to residents ratio. I looked at Newberry's, Alachua's and ours. Newberry staffs one city employee per hundred residents. They have only a fire department. Alachua staffs one point four employees per hundred residents and they've got only police. We staff one point two employees per hundred residents and we have both police and fire. So in terms of staffing levels, we can't get any leaner. People in High Springs have come to expect the level of service they get from local police and local fire. Keeping those two are very important to them, but it's also very expensive. I've never seen people come into a meeting saying, raise my taxes. Because keeping these guys in the fire department is that important to them? I do, I do have interest in the four, four-person shift. I realize that that, that causes some, some issue, but we still have four people per. And we've got available people to come in and help if needed, if that was able to help a little bit. This year and next year, if we change that business model, that still gives us pretty good service. We've got twenty down here with the ambulance and obviously twenty-one now down on, on in Alachua. But in my opinion, number four is a non-negotiable, because it's important to this community. And it also raises the cost of living here for every household, if they were paying a county fire assessment as opposed to a city fire assessment. I love our employees more than anything else in the world, but I don't know that we can afford to give them all raises. I hate to say that. And I know we mentioned, we talked about it last week. I think we need to take a cut. If we're gonna tell employees they can't have a raise, we need to, we need to take at least a twenty-five percent cut in what we're making. It's not a ton anyway, but at least it would be something.
We gotta be with them. We're gonna cut them. They gotta be with them.
And I think that I, I, going forward, the idea that Sandy Gardner had in terms of, you know, having marathons, having races that could raise money. The frozen foot was something that we used to do, but we kinda, we kinda came back from that. I think if we advertised the frozen foot to be supporting our local police and fire departments, I think we'd see a lot of people show up. And at least that would be a source of revenue. It's not something we can bank on, but it's something perhaps we could plan for to augment one, one of these one through three options here to get more revenue in. Kirsten, this would be a question for you. If we had fundraisers like that, where people were gonna register to be in a race, how are those funds limited in terms of, could we use that to build up our reserves? What could we do with that kinda stuff?
So it depends on how you advertise. So you can't, you can't, for instance, say, this money is going to benefit your police and fire. Here's this race and everyone's going to, to donate. And then put it in your general fund or your reserves or things like that. So you have to be specific about what it is that you're gonna be spending it on. And saying, this is to build up our reserves is, is still too general. You have to have a specific place where that's gonna go. And Diane, obviously, correct me if you disagree with any of that.
I don't see people coming to run to build up City High Springs reserves.
Agreed.
I think the years I was there, I think we, the most we ever had was sixty people running it. So, and it takes a lot of time, effort, volunteers and money to run those things. I don't know how profitable they would be unless you had several thousand.
So the frozen foot is coming back. The proposed dates are either February seventh or the fourteenth. So they will, they'll be bringing that back, just food for thought.
And I know we talked about building reserves. So last week I mentioned about trash being a way that we could build reserves. Um, the county's contract with G F L is about nineteen dollars a can. House pickup, we currently pay about twenty-four. That's two hundred thousand a year that we could be putting back in reserves if we went that direction. So I know we like everything, cause that's what I hear all the time, but something's gotta give. And that's one way that we could build reserves and it's right, ready, available, cause we already know the contract in what G F L has to offer. Waste Pro, more than likely, when they come back, they're coming back with the increase, cause they're, we're already at twenty-four. So they're coming back probably with twenty-six when they come back with their contract.
So what you, just so I understand, you wanna negotiate or garbage at a reduced rate, but we don't give that back to the citizens? We keep charging them the twenty-four?
We were doing it before.
We were doing that before, for a long time.
Actually, at thirty-seventy-five is what we charge for cans right now. And we do have, after built in there to do that general fund transfer. So that two hundred and thirty thousand is on top of what we pay in the contract, so that we can make a transfer to the general fund.
But that's an enterprise fund. So we're not supposed to be doing that, right?
You can make a transfer, but they shouldn't be that big.
Shouldn't be as big as it is. So to Vice Mayor Miller's point, if we did recognize a, a little bit bigger delta between what we were paying and what we were charging, that can still only be used to build up the reserves for the solid waste fund.
What we would do is lower the rate, so we break even in the solid waste fund. Reduce the transfer, you know, not have the big transfer to the general fund. And give the customers a break. But again, it's, it's part of that whole big circle. You know, we're not gonna, we need to be able to reduce the transfer, cause it's not.
Right.
And have the general fund the same, and then be able to reduce the rates to the customer. So if we have a dis, if we get a new contract that's cheaper and you keep the general fund transfer the same, you can still lower the rates for your customers, cause part of that bill is going down. So we would instead, you don't really need a reserve, so to speak, in the solid waste. For us, it worked well that we had it, because when we went up to Waste Pro and had a huge increase, that gave us a few months to not increase the bill for the customers. But typically, we shouldn't be having swings like that anyway, but.
There's no maintenance for us to do for solid waste, so the reserves there are less important than water and wastewater, is what you're saying?
Correct. The contract and then a small amount of staff time, cause we do have the billing for it and calls on the solid.
So that extra couldn't be used in any other department?
Not really. I mean, the transfer's already too big. I mean, you could, we are doing a transfer right now. We're doing that exact thing. We're supplementing general fund with the bills from solid waste. So we're currently doing it. We shouldn't be doing it at that extent, because it's not, it's just not appropriate. We don't have costs that can justify that amount.
But still, to your point, Vice Mayor, if we did pass that savings on to the residents, it would still be giving them some relief in another area if we were raising the utility rates here.
Well, I feel like if we're trying to do the right thing here, then the right thing is to lower the garbage rate. If she's saying that's wrong to do what we're doing, we're trying to fix all this wrong, we, we need to do that. And I, I still have another question towards you. Since Newberry voted to raise the fire assessment to three hundred dollars, I believe Tuesday night, what is their, I'm sure y'all did some research, what is their utility billing with their wastewater and all going on right now? Do y'all have any idea of that?
I don't know what they're saying. Jeremy has some information that he.
I'm just curious with their new fire assessment, what their residents are gonna be paying. Because with us having fire and police, and that's what people want, and they have sewer, we have to be competitively with the same rate, or we're not gonna stay solvent with all this.
But Newberry's fire assessment also went up thirty-three percent. They went up from two hundred to three hundred. We went up twenty-three dollars, so. Twenty-seven, sorry. Um, also, Newberry also has a utility. They sell power, so they've got a, a source of revenue that we don't.
Mayor, can I just answer a question that, um, actually Vice Mayor Miller had brought up at previous meeting and Commissioner White's actually mentioned tonight. I did do an analysis of our employees, that anyone who had been here started after, um, October first and would go till September thirtieth. I think the savings on not giving those people raises would be around fifteen thousand dollars, just so you have that number in your head. The only problem we have with that is then we won't be able to increase, that's the part that's in our personnel menu, when we give across the board raises. And I guess we're eliminating, maybe it's not an across the board raise. If it's not new, I don't, I, I don't know legally, but if it's, we normally, if we do it across the board, we have to increase our, um, pay ranges. So then somebody coming in behind a new per, a person that's been here for nine, they make more than they do.
Uh, Kristen, did, um, did y'all get a chance to look more into the canoe outpost?
So we've not been able to get with the county yet, because it's budget season right now, to try and determine wild spaces, funds versus other funds. So we don't have an answer yet on that. Our, our budgetary concerns are sort of secondary to them trying to get their own budget through.
The base rate for High Springs on water and wastewater, see? Says High Springs fifteen fifty-five, Newberry's ten ninety-nine, but that doesn't include the tiers for the water. And Newberry's quite a bit lower than us.
It was for water, fifteen fifty-five?
Doing this, my phone's on. Yes, that's water. It'll take me a second to get wastewater.
Our wastewater's forty-four oh five and that includes the first five K gallons, the first five thousand gallons.
Per month?
Per month. The other utilities don't have any gallons included in their customer charges, so they're much lower. But, you'll see some utilities have a much higher K-L charge over that. Like ours is seven ninety-six after the first five thousand. There are some utilities that I looked at that are eleven, twelve. They're a lot.
I guess my ultimate question is, are we below where other cities are doing?
No, we're really, we're not.
About even, right? Close?
We're, we're relatively close. The, the challenge is that even though now we may be close to them, for years, we were below them, so we missed out on that revenue for all those years. So they went up gradually and they had the time value of that growth. We just kinda stayed below them and then now we're, below's not the right word.
How long has it been since we raised our water wastewater rates?
We, we raised them, but not enough. Two years ago, or twenty-twenty-three. Sorry, I'm trying to remember what year I'm in right now. I'm doing audit in this year and next year and.
So I was making a motion tonight?
Yeah, they need to know what we're doing.
Do something.
And what I'll do is, whatever you guys decide tonight, I'll incorporate over the weekend. I'll send out a packet to Angela on either Monday or Tuesday to get out to you so that you have time to look at it before the meeting on the eighth, in case you have questions, you can reach out to Jeremy or me. And that way, when we come in on the eighth, I, you know, I want you to already be comfortable.
With, with the raises that are proposed there, what was the raise that was built in across the board?
Three percent.
Three percent across the board.
And then police have a different value.
Police has the different value to bring them up to that, that starting fifty thousand, I think, Chief?
Yes.
Brings them up to fifty.
Just a reminder that recruitment retention, we're severely behind. So when we don't, our, we would have officers potentially can go get an eight, ten thousand dollar raise right next door. And keep in mind, multiple agencies around us have plenty of vacancies. We don't have them. So, the reality is that you potentially would lose several police officers.
Or any other city employees.
Well, I hate to be the bad guy, but, um.
I don't think you're a bad guy. You're just.
Bad situation.
Bad situation.
My motion would be, can I do a combination?
Yeah, can we have an à la carte option?
Okay.
Do whatever you want. Long as, long as the money, long as the end number comes up right, yeah, we can do, we can do a combination.
All right, so I.
I'm gonna borrow your pen, though.
Um, my motion would be no raises, the fire shift, the twelve fifteen a month, and the millage rate increase. And the twenty-five percent deduction for the commission.
You're looking at number three and then also take out no raises, and then also have no raises. Is that correct? So, that would get you situation number, scenario number three with approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional savings and then another three hundred thousand dollars for the extra on the sewer to go to twenty-four, twenty-five. So you'd get about five hundred and fifty thousand. That would.
I don't think he, unless I misunderstood you, he's only talking about twelve fifteen raise on the sewer, not the twenty twenty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you said the twenty twenty-four. Okay, so that would be scenario number three, and then you also don't have employee raises. The portion of the raises that are police under the union scenario, including, and that is the full cost of the raise, meaning that the retirement and FICA are included in that number, is a hundred and eighty thousand. The rest of that is our general, our other general fund employees.
So, before we make this motion, throwing it out there, number three, reduce the shifts to four, raising the sewers rate to twenty-four, twenty-five. Like you said, every twelve fifteen is roughly three hundred and ten thousand. And then we keep the raises. I, as strongly as you feel about keeping the fire department, I do too, but I also feel the same way about raises. If we raise that rate, then that would cover what we would be saving, plus sixty thousand, and keep, and, and giving the employees the raises.
Say that again, Chair.
One more time.
So if you got. So I was trying to.
So you were saying do number three and make the rate twenty-four, twenty-five instead of, so what that would do is it'd increase the utilities for a customer over the year by a hundred and forty-four dollars, roughly, twelve times twelve is one forty-four. And then, that would give us an extra five fifty to six hundred in revenue. Right?
We're back here next year.
No, that gives us an extra three hundred. Oh, wait, we're keeping the raises.
Now, can I add a?
You're keeping the raises, you're getting rid of the raises. Let me go back to your, you were doing a motion, right? So let me go back to your.
I was gonna say, can I add a, can I add a muck and wrench in there? Could we do the trash? Cuz if you're gonna raise all that up on the citizen, can we go ahead and do the trash?
What do you mean, do the trash?
Cuz we already know, can we actually look into the GFL contract piggybacking?
You guys haven't voted on a contract. We don't, we don't have, we haven't negotiated it. It's too, it's too early to do that with the trash.
But we're still under contract. When that contract comes, we, then whatever savings we can have, we can give to the.
Absolutely. We can, you can change your utility rate if you want to during the year. We just have to need to go through a process. But with solid waste, there's not a notification like we have with the other utilities. So if we did that mid-year, if you wanted to, in a meeting, vote to change the rates, we absolutely can do that.
So let's go back to what y'all were trying to combine. So you're talking about going to number three scenario, down to four people.
Down to four per shift. Keep the raises and add twelve fifteen.
So make it twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
What's that gonna do for Diane?
So that would give you three hundred and ten thousand. It would be scenario three, plus a savings or additional revenue of three hundred and ten thousand on top of that. So it would be number three with a hundred and forty-four dollars more on the utility bill at the bottom, and you would have three hundred and ten thousand. So you could, by doing that, you could cover the local option gas tax transfer, and you'd have a little bit more than that. So we could, you know, again, these are budget numbers. So we're trying to get as close as we can, but the reality is things are gonna flux.
Well, can we work it up to kinda go in a happy medium and get to three hundred dollars a year? Cuz that would be from four hundred and two for scenario one, two forty-eight for scenario three. If we go to maybe get around three hundred for the year to kinda level it out, would that get us somewhere in a positive?
I mean, if we raise the sewer rate, not twelve fifteen or twenty-four, twenty-five, but maybe twenty?
We, we realize if we go with shift, or if we go with number three, we're firing firefighters, right?
We're firing.
We're firing three firefighters. So we are laying people off if we do that. I mean, we, I mean, I don't think people understand, we can drop down to four, but that's, we getting rid of people. So if, is there a way, all right, what does it look like if we went thirty-six? That we did one and two, the numbers on one and two, what is that, thirty-six, forty? What does that look like?
So that would give you another three hundred thousand in revenue, and it would add a hundred and forty-four to, so really, you're looking at number one? Are we looking at scenario one, but instead go to thirty-six? Is that what you're doing? Okay.
Or thirty, make it even thirty. Come in a happy medium.
Give me thirty-six first.
Okay, so if we do thirty-six, that's gonna give you an additional three hundred and ten thousand in revenue. It would increase the customer's bill by a hundred and forty-four at the bottom. So that would give them a bill of five hundred and fifty additional per year.
Per year.
And those other numbers are pretty static.
But I'm not firing anybody.
You're not firing anybody. Well, you're not laying anybody off. Somebody might be.
Well, laying them off, that feels a hell of a lot like being fired.
Mr. Mayor, to your point about reducing the shift to four, yes, you're laying off three firefighters. Also, to Chief Shepherd's point, it's a matter of safety. There's a structure fire out of Post Springs right now. We have five, five people that could go. You reduce that to four, there's no two in, two out. There's somebody that's dying in that building, guess what? They're gonna wait fifteen minutes until another truck can get there. That's safety and that's someone's life. Two-legged, four-legged, that's someone's life.
Now, if the county took over, they would run.
Three people.
Four, three, four.
So we'd actually get even less?
How do, how do they do that? How do they provide service? How does Newberry provide service with only four? How does the county provide service with only three?
Good question.
They're, they're waiting.
The county has, the county has several units coming, but they still have to wait. They don't have that option. We have the, we have the ability to make a bigger impact on our community with the five that we have.
Well, Newberry also, though, has the added staffing of the ambulance that's there, that the county pays for, and the county staffs. So really, there are six people there. I mean, they would have two for the ambulance, right? Don't you think?
Assuming they're in quarters and available, and they're so directed to initiate firefighting activities and not rescue, which is out of the discretion of the company officer or the battalion chief.
And they don't compensate Newberry for that ambulance being in that fire station.
Right, right. They built it so that it would go there. I understand that they don't pay for it, so.
So thirty-six, forty, do I, am I here next year too, talking, having the same conversation, even at thirty-six, forty? Jesus Christ. They really want us to get rid of y'all.
Really?
Oh, that's not, that is not it at all. This is a math thing, and believe me, if I had ten more scenarios, I'd put them up there.
So realistically, if we didn't have to do this next year, what, we realistically have to be, to be in real view?
Number four.
No. Well, number four, yeah, but I'm talking about.
No, on the other ones, it really depends on where you wanna go. It depends on how fast you wanna change the transfers. It depends on how far, how fast you want to increase your, or start developing reserves. And it really depends on what the costs are next year.
What if we didn't develop reserves and just got us?
Yeah, if the county, if the county doesn't change the transfer for fire, then you're good. But, you know, as that goes, so we just have to keep that in mind, and that could be covered with, that could be recovered, recovered in a fire assessment. So there's still room to improve or increase the fire assessment, so that's an option. I mean, you absolutely can do number one and have that increase and even a higher increase. I, I, I don't know what the breaking point is for utility customers on whether or not they're gonna be able to pay their water bill.
Extra a hundred dollars a year could be their breaking point.
One hundred percent. And that's, and that, and I only say that because we see people that struggle to pay a fifty dollar bill.
Yeah, cuz we have a, a big retirement community here, so I'm thinking about them. They're not, they're not working another, even people older than Wayne.
They must be really old.
And they can't do it, cuz they can't, they're not physically in shape to go back and do a job.
That's why, you know, it's not just me or my circle. There's people here that's been here all their lives. They're on fixed income now.
Yep.
And like I said, there's no good op, like, somebody is hurt in every option, in whether it's the community, employees, both.
Yeah, and like I said, and I hate to say it, but my motion is still on the floor. Fire, no raises.
To recap your motion, no raises, four on a shift, twelve fifteen on sewer rate, raise the millage, and twenty-five percent deduction for the city commission salary.
If I could speak to the fire assess, for the county, we're still in negotiations. That could, we, that's an estimate. What the county told us is the one ninety-seven is their projection. It's not a solid number. It could be higher. It could be less, depending on how many times we run into the county, okay? We could negotiate a multi-year contract where we know that that number, per call number, will stay the same. As New, as Alachua continues to build, twenty-one's gonna continue to head back into Alachua more often. That's going to lead us running more calls back into our city where we should be, which will end up help, which will end up keep saving us money, okay? So those are things that, it's kind of an unknown. The one ninety-seven is their projection based on the two months of data that they have. That's the unfortunate part. There's only two months of data. Today alone, we ran three times into the county, where they only came once into our city. So, number's not completely the same. And just, just so you know, the three people that would be, end up being laid off are in your audience today, so.
So we know we're gonna be here next year, no matter what we do. So why don't we just take the easy fix and go with scenario one and then we deal with it again?
And Commissioner, I will say that this year, we're limited to a quarter mill because we've set our max milling rate. Next year, you may wanna go a totally, I'm not suggesting it, but that becomes an option that you don't have now, if that makes sense. Right now, you're limited to a quarter mill. If you wanna spread it across everybody, next year, you know.
We're also limited with our fire assessment raise because we didn't really know what was going on with the county until we had already agreed to how much that was gonna be. Our max for a fire assessment could go up again, and that's a once per year on your, on your tax bill that we, we are, we are likely going to have to address again next year.
You'll have those tools next year.
If we knew, if we knew back then that the county was gonna do what they did.
Right, right. We could've prepared better.
In my opinion, dirty as hell, we wouldn't be in this situation right now, as far into this situation.
Right, that piece would go away.
Well, the only reason we're not go, if we went with scenario four, we wouldn't be here next year doing something, right? Are we still gonna do something if we picked number four for next year?
No.
Then we just deal with what we gotta deal with. Go with number one, we keep our people. We deal with it as a yearly thing, what we did last year, a yearly thing, and then we figure out a way, we have a year to figure out something before next year to make some adjustments. We can change our fire assessment next year to help with that, and then hopefully something comes our way. I don't wanna see us lose any, any of our people. I've already said that many times before. We already paying them lower than what any other.
Lower than what they deserve, I can tell you that. One thing I hate, though, is I don't wanna price people out of being able to live in High Springs either.
Nope.
People that have been here their whole lives, that are on that fixed income. We'll figure it out. It's just gonna take.
But I do wanna remember what Commissioner Miller said and what you, Diane, you said on the garbage. If we're doing something wrong and we're trying to make right, we gotta make that right when it comes up for negotiation, cuz that's wrong. And nothing that any of y'all have done that we're here, we gotta make it right, cuz that's what we're up here to do. I make a motion to go with number one.
Hold on, we have a motion on the floor right now with no second. Do we have, do we have a second for that motion? We do not. Motion dies.
I will make a motion to accept scenario one.
Second.
Citizen comments, please. No citizen comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
It hurts. I know. So what we'll do, we have three days. So I wanna get you guys' chance to take a look at this budget before the budget workshop. That only gives us three days, really, to get it. So try to give us to maybe Wednesday.
Yeah, it's a budget hearing. It's not a workshop. We're voting.
No, no, yeah, you're voting. I'm saying, yeah, I'm sorry, I said workshop, hearing. Three days, so give me and Diane, we're off Monday, so give us at least.
I'll do it over the weekend, so you have it on Tuesday, cuz you need to have time to look at it and, and in case I make a mistake, somebody can find it. More eyes, there's a lot of numbers. But no, I, I wanna make sure you guys have time to do it.
So once we get this budget in all of its detail, we've given you direction at this point, we can still make modifications at that first budget meeting. Can we still, you know, make small tweaks?
The challenge is I only have so many hours. And so what happens is, between the two meetings, there's two weeks. In that middle week in between, we have to advertise. there's two weeks. In that middle week in between, we have to advertise. And anything that has to be advertised, there's, there's a budget add. And the budget add is not the way we keep our data. So we have to reconfigure the data into their format that goes in the paper, and then we can't change anything. So I can do it. I don't like to do it in a day or two, change all those numbers and worry about making a mistake and have the state send it back to me.
Yeah.
And again, that sounds selfish, but we have so much going on, I don't wanna make a mistake. So, yes, you can make a change technically on that date. I would prefer not to.
Best practice is to not, but if we had to, we could.
Yes, I would not recommend anything significant because the resolutions and ordinances and everything have a lot of numbers in them, and they're not something we can change on the fly during the meeting very easily.
Like scenario number one didn't address at all cutting the commission's pay.
Correct. Now, we, but, but if it's in your, it's okay. If it's in, if you wanna make a motion to make that part of it, I don't know if it's too late to add that as a motion.
You can, absolutely.
Anything you do tonight, we can put in, we can build in. It's just on the eighth, by then, we've got a lot of documents completed and unless there's a major flaw that, you know. Does that make sense?
So option one still gets employees their raises. But if I could make a motion to modify that, to also include a twenty-five percent reduction in commission pay, I would like to offer that motion as well.
I'll second that.
Citizen comment? Okay, properly move the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Diane another question, if that's possible. With all the stress you've had to deal with, with coming up with these numbers, should you have been in this situation? What put you in this situation, or us in this situation, of being here? Is it something that should've been addressed years along with this budget? That now you're trying to crunch numbers because of what's happened in the past? We shouldn't be here, should we?
I agree.
And it's also adding limited growth, or all the years that the city has stopped growth in, here. Like, it's, it's, it's all adding up now.
And is it because we've spent money wildly and misused it? Yes.
I was gonna ask that question when you said that about limited growth. Aren't we kinda in this situation because we added on to the sewer? But if we had put a, if we didn't, if we had stopped it right then, we wouldn't have been in this situation, 'cause we're actually paying more, 'cause we don't have enough people to pay for the additional.
We were at capacity.
But if we stopped it, 'cause we could've stopped it then.
Now, once you're over eighty percent of capacity, you gotta start building your second plant. And you, you're almost at a hundred percent, so you had to build a second plant anyways.
But you said we could've stopped it, right? We could've just.
You couldn't stop it.
I thought last minute we talked about that.
Jason explained to me that at sixty percent, you have to start planning your next plant, and DEP considers eighty percent, you're at capacity. So really, a hundred percent doesn't matter. Eighty percent is a hundred percent. So we're, we would already be close to that eighty percent mark of our first plant now, and so we're really moving in.
Yeah, I was saying, I know last minute we talked about, at that percentage, we could've stopped and said we weren't putting no more on the system.
I think you was talking about stopping subdivision or development, right? Was that what it was mentioned?
So, yeah, about sixty to seventy percent usually is when DEP wants you to start planning it out as far as of your capacity and everything. Seventy-five percent, they want you to really start having boots, you know, plants solidified and everything. And about eighty-five, ninety percent, they want ground broken and really going already and are playing already, even with the increased capacity to they bounce it between two hundred and ninety, but basically three hundred thousand average flow and everything. We're already at about ninety-two percent as of our last DMR from my la, last month in July.
Right, but at what percentage can a, um, what's the word?
Moratorium?
Yes. At what percentage can you do that?
You can do a moratorium anytime prior to that eighty percent.
'Cause see, last minute, we said you gotta be at, at least sixty. I got a good remember, I'm telling you. At sixty is when you can do that. And if we had did that then, would we be in the situation that we're in today?
You would had him put moratorium on years ago, years ago.
But I'm saying, but if we had did that.
You could've, you could stop growth.
They basically did for ten years, if you look back at some of the people that were here before. They basically stopped growth in this town for ten years straight. And what all that did was stop money from coming in here and basically put us into this situation. If you don't have.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't grow it out.
Coming in, you're not going to be able to do things, and that's why our roads and our sewer systems and all these things are behind is because we haven't had anything to, to put into them to make them better.
Our roads are behind because we were using the money in the wrong place. Right? I mean, we were not keeping the funds in the right lanes, and now we're doing that, right? So can I ask you a question, to piggyback on Vice Mayor Miller's question? What's our current capacity with both plants right now?
Well, the BTU one, the original plant online, that one's actually off still. They're.
Being refurbished.
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
So BTU two, the new plant, everything is online right now, still running and everything, so. Yeah, I mean, roughly with both plants online, we will still already be about sixty percent at our current flow rates.
We had that first plant recertified to be able to absorb a little bit more capacity, I remember, a few years ago.
No, I'm sorry, as far as I believe, I'm not sure, and I'll have to see the permit and everything at that point, but I would assume that's going to the two forty. I mean, just 'cause that was what it was originally designed for. Three hundred was kind of a, hey, get by and get this done, so.
Right. So at sixty percent, when both plants are online, that would be the time. If we wanted to issue a moratorium and say, okay, any new building will have to be at least an acre, will have to have well and septic, how, how would DEP react to that?
I believe they, I believe it could work. Um, as far as, already at over fifty percent, we'll have to start doing a capacity analysis report annually. But, I mean, that could, you know, cut a lot of it, but as the mayor said, we haven't had a whole lot of growth besides residential. And clearly, of how much it's grown just residentially for the most part, too, so. I mean, since really COVID and everything years ago, I just, it's increased drastically in my time being here.
Which in, in reality, we don't have a lot of commercial space here in town. So we're gonna just grow in residence, 'cause we don't have a lot of commercial space. So that, so back to the original question. So now, if we did that, is that actually gonna help, or is that gonna hurt? So if we got to eighty or whatever number we have to get to to stop, and we stopped, would that actually help? Or keep adding on, so creating another sewer, is that gonna help?
I'll tell you, just from a rates perspective, we have a lot of fixed cost in utilities. So no matter how many customers you have, you still have to have the plant, you still have to have the pipes. The more people you have to spread that across, the lower the price for everyone. If you don't add new customers, if you add new customers, that fixed cost is still a fixed cost. You can spread it across more people and lower people's rates. If you don't add new customers, that fixed cost is, as things get more expensive, it's just gonna continue to grow and grow and grow. So ideally, that's why, like, when we do the, the customer charge, we wanna try to collect as much in the customer charge as possible because it doesn't vary with how much usage there is. It's a fixed cost. It costs, like our half a million dollars we pay for debt. We have that whether we have one customer or a million customers. So if you have a million customers paying for a half, a half a million dollars instead of one customer, they're gonna be paying less. So you, you, there's a balance in there between how much it costs to build a plant. It's, there's not a yes or no answer, is why I'm saying this. It depends on how close you are to capacity, whether you need to build a whole new plant, what the cost is, how many more people you have coming on to spread it over. It, there's not a, there's not a one answer for that question. Sorry, that's not helpful, but there's too many factors in the math to give you a yes or no answer about the moratorium.
Kirsten, in terms of capacity and wastewater hookups, I know that somewhere in the developer's agreement with Bridlewood, we promised them a certain amount of capacity.
That's pretty standard.
So we have to honor that. As Bridlewood continued to build out, however, if we had a moratorium set in place at some point in that middle timeframe, how would that impact us legally in terms of Bridlewood?
So i- in terms of Bridlewood specifically, so long as what you have promised them in their developer's agreement, you honor. Whatever you have contractually is honored. You're sat there. What I will say is that you have a, a loan now that you all are paying on, on this new system or this expansion, and.
That was grant funded, wasn't it?
Not the, not the new plant, but our existing.
Oh, the, oh, old plant, yes, yes.
System we have.
Yes, yeah.
So part of, and I, I haven't looked at the loan documents, but I've done many similar loans in Williston. And I can tell you that very standard language is that the security that they have is the income that you're gonna generate from providing this utility. And so there are gonna be restrictions in that loan document. I'm almost a hundred percent sure on more, providing a moratorium that would prohibit your growth because the intent is to provide you funds, they loan you, and then you build, and then you increase your income. And they secure your loan with that increased income for you all to then go and say, we're not going to allow this income to be fully fulfilled and, and realized. I, I think that you may run into some issues there, so I do just wanna flag that.
That's important, okay.
So we were about to expand if, if Bridlewood did come on, because by the time they get halfway built, we would be at eighty percent.
That's what I was gonna ask now. We're sixty percent now, what Richard just said. So that's not figuring in Bridlewood in that number, right?
Correct.
So if Bridlewood was at full swing, where would we be at today? Ninety, a hundred percent?
We would have, we would have to build, by the time Bridlewood gets fully built out, we would have to have a third plant.
Okay, where are you pulling that money out of?
Impact fees and the grants. So the impact fees will be your matching for the grants through DEP for a new plant.
Now, okay, with that being said, with the impact fees on just Bridlewood, that's not gonna generate enough money to build a new wastewater plant, would it? Is that gonna cash flow that, I guess is what I'm asking.
Grant for this one paid a hundred percent. You didn't even have a match on this one.
So it could cash flow the whole thing? Okay.
Just depends on what's out there at that time for grant money. Like, right now, there's no grant money out there with the, with the, all levels of government cutting back, and we wouldn't be able to get a grant. I mean, we might be able to get a grant, but not as good as what we got. It just depends on what the economy's like when Bridlewood gets built out to where we have to get a new plant.
Okay. And then, since we're talking about wastewater, what is the situation on the one out here at two thirty-six? Do we know when that construction's gonna begin?
We have an issue. We, we have everything's laid out. We had to pause it for two reasons. One, they believe, what is that tortoise called?
Gopher tortoise.
Gopher tortoise. And we had to have, get a permit, and it could, and once they get out there, day one, it could be up to twenty-eight days before they can even break ground for this gopher tortoise. Also, the person that gave us this, the area, the, the build on, where we're building the lift station, where the lift station has to go, impedes their access to where they farm. So their attorney is working with Danielle. We have a phone call on Tuesday to see what we can work out with their attorney to make sure they still have access to their field. They have a couple other accesses, but we're talking about giving them a right of way on their other access, but Danielle's gonna work that out with their attorney on Tuesday. But the main thing right now, once we get the okay from Danielle, we still gotta deal with that gopher tortoise.
Okay.
They're everywhere.
They're there.
Uh, moving on to new business item four. This is Gus Considering Act on Setting Up a Joint City/County Commission Meeting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, as you may know, uh, Mr. Marshall indicated that you weren't able to attend the county commission meeting on Tuesday, so I did. And I made the request that we have a joint meeting, and they said, no, thank you. Um, so I didn't get into any of the weeds at the meeting. I simply conveyed your request that we have a joint meeting and.
They didn't want that.
They just, they didn't feel that they would have the time to be able to fit that in this late in the budget season, so. Um, you know, they did direct staff to continue working with, with our staff. I don't know what that means. We really don't know what that means, so.
I appreciate you going.
Yeah, no problem.
I think that they, uh, I think that they have negotiated with us in bad faith. And I think that their behavior and the, I don't know if it's the, the commissions or the, the city manager, or, I'm sorry, the, the county manager, but I think they have acted in extreme bad faith with us. And I think that, uh, we should probably formulate a letter from our commission with all of us signing it that tells them that this is what we believe, because I, if, if I'm correct, Chief, we pretty much came to terms with them at one point, and then they pulled that back.
We had, we had an agreement. He's, he, when we left the room, he had to approach his county manager and talk to his county manager about it. So ultimately, the county manager made that decision. But Chief has had agreed with us.
Which.
For, for a four, or a flat rate. But I guess when he went to his county manager, his county manager determined that that was not what she wanted.
Which is interesting. I've sat in ten-plus years of contract negotiations with cities for first responder stuff like this, that where I was the lead negotiator, and that has never happened before. I sat in city of Alachua with stuff, Chad, we never had that happen whenever we negotiated. We, that's never happened with the, you don't go into those meetings, Chief Theis. I doubt went into that meeting under the impression that he could give out a number that he was not already greenlit to give. That's why I think that this is an, a, a, an extremely ill will on the county side, and we need to address it as such and publicly. I would like it delivered to the media. I would like it delivered to them, and I think they need to know that what they're doing is greatly affecting what we're doing. And it's, it's absolutely going against everything that Chief Theis sat up here and said, which he doesn't want our fire department. If you ask me, I think he's trying to buy our fire department at, at a, at a bargain deal, is what I would assume is happening right now. So this bad faith negotiation that they're doing is, I'm gonna say a really bad word up here, but, uh, it's bad. It's unacceptable, and we need to get ahead of it and get after it right now. That's what I would like for us to do. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about it, but this to me is no way to do business, and they, they did it poorly, and they did it to us, and they did it to our citizens and our, our employees that work hard for us every day, and they're the reason that we're, part of the reason we're sitting up here talking about not giving people raises, which is unacceptable.
Chief, didn't y'all, last year, when you negotiated, it was supposed to be the same way this year?
We did a one-year contract last year.
But other chiefs are like Newberry, for instance, they did that same kinda negotiation, correct?
They did. Um, they, they do, uh, they get a pay-per-call. Newberry actually has another year in their contract, 'cause they sold, signed a multi-year contract. We refused to do that because we weren't sure what the data was gonna look like at Station Twenty-One. And honestly, this new con, this contract he's, he's sent me that he wants, he wants to move forward with is the same exact contract as we had last year. The same pay-per-call. The only, the only reason why that number is projected to be lower is because of Station Twenty-One being there. So.
With no data behind it, he thinks he can cut a hundred and, they wanna cut a hundred and plus thousand dollars.
They feel that, they feel that that's what the impact of Station Twenty-One's going to be. We, we don't know that that's correct or not. We don't have enough data. That's why we were asking for a floor, because we don't have that data. We don't know what that number's gonna be.
So the contract was to go to the end of October, is that how it goes? What's the?
Our contract goes through September thirtieth.
September thirtieth.
Yeah, it starts October one. So we currently have a contract with them. We get eight sixty-five per call that we run into the county, and then we reimburse them eight sixty-five every time they come into the city. Um, and with Twenty-One being there, they come into the city a lot more often um, than, than that now.
So we're gonna end up paying them more if they keep coming in here more?
Well, we don't pay, we don't technically pay them. They just deduct that off of what they owe us. So, yeah, I mean, that's why he's projecting one ninety-seven. Um, because he believes that Twenty-One's gonna take that many calls into the city. And we're gonna have that less, that least amount of calls into the county area. Because they're also taking some calls that we normally would've responded to with Twenty-One where it is, with their proximity to seventy-five, we don't catch the calls out two thirty-six quite as often anymore, 'cause they can go straight up the interstate and right off onto two thirty-six. Where we have to go down two thirty-six to get there. It's a, it's a, it's a numbers game. So, and it's a closest unit response thing, too, is what it is, which is why you're seeing them into Oak Ridge and, and those neighborhoods a little more, because they are closer than we are. Now, if we had something closer down that area, we could fix that. But we don't, nor do we have the money. Nor do we have the money or staffing to open a second station.
Well, you may mention that maybe we could set up something with Palm Medical's.
It's possible.
What, what would that entail?
It would basically be staging a piece of apparatus there for the peak hours. We'd have to enter an agreement with them. I don't know, but we could actually make that happen, but we might. Um, but we'd, we'd stage a piece of our apparatus there for the peak hours and hopefully recoup some of those calls that they're running into our city and give us the ability to, to take care of our own residents.
Well, it seems like they're willing to help out with that, and I'm just wondering, would they just give us a room to be able to station our guys in there to keep them comfortable throughout, you know, whatever hours we're going to have them there instead of them just sitting in a vehicle?
We honestly don't know what that's going to look like. We really don't, um, because we haven't really talked to anybody from Palms yet.
Well, I would like for us to move forward with that and see if that wouldn't help us out. And keep taking care of our city. I mean, if it would benefit us as citizens.
Right.
And still not hurt y'all on running your operation. Because you're going to have the radio communication, correct? I mean, whether they're stationed down there or stationed here.
Right.
If, if y'all see that that would be beneficial, I would like for y'all to look into that.
I'll explore.
Because we need to try to keep our money in our town to help us out any much we, as much as we can.
Okay.
Jeremy, do you see that being a problem with anything?
I'll explore that option.
Or do I need to make a motion for that to go forward?
So, Chief, that would be basically the same thing as when you were up at Camp Calaco up here for a time when they were fixing the fire station. You would just have maybe a crew stationed there during peak hours.
Correct. We would have to see where the peak hours are.
Right.
We'd have a, we'd have a crew stationed there, probably our squad, and then we would have our engine at the sta, at our station. So, that would put our squad closer to our people.
Okay.
And so, for closest unit response, we would catch those calls, the first ones at least.
I think however you staff that was, is your decision. That's a you thing.
What would that do? Where's our medium rescue going to come in this picture since we're talking about this?
The medium rescue would be the one that we would probably stage down that way, because it's our, it's our ALS truck. Well, both of our trucks are ALS, but, um, that's probably where we would stage it. Which could lead to more, um, on the interstate calls, too. Possibly. I can't guarantee that, but.
Chief, can I get clarification? The amount that we're paying to the county is the same as they are paying to us?
That's correct.
I thought they paid us a little bit less.
No. Nope. Eight sixty, eight sixty-five is the number both ways.
Okay, so hang on a second, then hear me out here. Everybody that's in Oak Ridge is a City of High Springs resident, but they're also a county resident. That county fire station is already getting money from them. Why are we paying them the same amount?
Because it's closest unit response. They come into our city. We go into their county. Anytime they come into our city, we reimburse them for coming into our city and covering that area. Anytime we go into the county, they pay us for covering their area.
Sure.
Now, if we take our own city calls, they don't pay us the eight sixty-five.
Right, sure. But that doesn't, that doesn't wash for me. Everybody, every one of us is paying our county general taxes. Seventy percent of their revenue comes from general county taxes.
Well, it comes from their, it comes from their fire assessment fees.
Fire assessment.
So, our residents aren't paying their fire assessment fees. They're paying our fire assessment fees.
Our residents are not paying their fire assessment fees, but their fire assessment fees only pay seventy percent of their budget.
Right.
So, there's another thirty percent that's being made up from the county general fund that every one of us is paying.
Yeah, they say it's sales tax.
Why are we paying them the same amount?
They said it's a, they said it's a sales tax, that other thirty percent. It's some sort of sales tax they're using to, uh, to supplement the other thirty percent.
That, that just doesn't sit well for me. I, I'd love for us to discuss that with the county commission as well, if we could.
Chief?
Yes.
So, City of Gainesville, let's use that for example. Is the county assisting them by the closest station?
It's, it's, it's almost a similar situation, except they have certain criteria for when the county comes into the city and when the city goes into the county. What they use is if it's a high acuity call, then they use closest unit response. If it's not high acuity, then the City of Gainesville can't, takes care of the City of Gainesville, and the county takes care of the county. So, like cardiac arrest, respiratory arrest, seizure patients, strokes, that would, that would warrant a closest unit response, which means Twenty-One may take that. But your falls, um, dizziness, nausea, those kind of calls, we would handle those within the city. So, the, that's how it works with the City of Gainesville. They, they have a different methodology of how they handle their calls.
I guess I'm just thinking on the pure fire situation.
On the fire situation, you're going to get everybody anyway. If it's a structured fire, you're going to get the closest unit, and it's going to be all of us, because it takes, you got to remember, per NFPA, you need at least fifteen to eighteen personnel on scene as, as the initial response in order to truly execute a fire extinguishment or rescue, right? So, we're going to get two or three engines from the county plus our engine in our squad. Eventually, that'll add up to about fifteen people. If it's not hydrogen, you're going to get tankers, um, things like that. Tanker is, is hurting us a little bit. Our tanker's out of service. It's being repaired. So, we're not catching all the tanker calls that we normally would into the county, so we are losing a few funds there. But the tanker was, had a tree fall on it during our, during our storm, during holing, so it's being repaired right now. So, once we get our tanker back, we'll start picking up a few more county calls, which will generate more revenue. But on that note, too, um, that tanker's almost twenty years old. They have about a ten-year lifespan, so that whole public safety impact fee thing might work out really nicely here in the next couple of years if we need to buy another tanker truck. So.
Mr. Marshall, have we signed that contract with them?
No.
With the county?
No, that's why we wanted to keep talking.
Do we, do we have any wiggle room in terms of the amount going in and going out based on the fact that it, it's kind of like the county's double-dipping on that one?
Yeah, they pulled back, they pulled back their number. Let's pull ours back.
I mean, Kirsten, I mean, am I on the wrong track here in terms of there, there's seventy percent of their revenue is from their fire assessment, or seventy percent of their budget comes from their fire assessment, county fire assessment. They've got to make that other thirty percent up. They could tell us it's coming from sales tax, but it could be coming from general fund. They could be transferring county general fund money to make that hole. That would be a reasonable transfer. People in the City of High Springs are paying that, too. Do we, could we make that point?
Yeah, I mean, you can absolutely make that point. If you're still in negotiation phases for your contract, absolutely.
I'd love it better if you could make that point, because you're probably better at it.
I will make that point.
Mr. Mayor, could we direct the attorney's office to draft a letter for us?
Absolutely. I would like us all to sign it, too.
Yes, sir.
That way, it gives it a little bit more, because we're in this together, right? They're doing this to all of us. So, they need to see that we're, we're together on this fully. There's no divisiveness up here with, uh, with how we feel like they're behaving, which is, to me, it's piss-poor. It's just terrible. Who, I've never seen that. I've never seen, in doing that for a decade, I've never seen terms agreed on in a room. And then, Chief, have you ever seen that? Agreed on in a room, and then they back out later to that tune?
I've never seen that either, and, and I've been on both sides of the fence. I've been a union president before, and I've been, you know, part of the administration as I am now. I, I've never done, I've never seen that done.
That's just bad faith, bad faith negotiation.
Well, that's what I was getting to when I was trying to make my point. Last year, when y'all made that, Chief Theis left, gentleman's agreement, nothing got changed with that. And now, all of a sudden, after you and Chief Theis left the room, gentleman's agreement, no, we're not going to do it that way. Shouldn't he have come back to you and said, hey, but we're relying on the county manager's word now and decision? And somebody called me that has been in those negotiations with another city and said that was wrong of what county did to us. That is not how the negotiation goes down. He's been with several years with Chief Theis and said that's never happened in his time that he's made those decisions.
Tell me if, tell me if you feel I'm wrong, but when we walked out of that room, how did we feel? What, what was his comment? His comment was, I'll take that to this county manager.
And don't normally he make that decision when he leaves that room in the past negotiations?
The county, the county manager gets the, he's got to get the, so, way it normally goes is Chief Peters and Chief Theis would negotiate it out, and then bring it to me and bring it to the county manager. The county manager squashed what we negotiated.
But this individual's telling me that's never happened before.
That's not the way it goes.
Exactly. That's what I'm getting at.
Normally, they have a meeting beforehand. I'm sure you and Chief Peters had a meeting beforehand. Hey, look, we're trying to get this. We need it for this, for that reason. You come in, there's.
I think you're exactly right. Chief Theis knew what number he was playing with.
The number changed on him.
And, yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's just bad faith. What'd you, what was your idea for her to, for the attorney's office?
If we could direct the attorney's office, I'd like to make a motion. We'd direct the attorney's office to draft a letter to the county. Um, negotiating, I mean, I guess that they're not willing to negotiate the, the soft, soft landing spot that you guys had, had agreed to, but in terms of the reciprocal pay, it's disparate. We're over, overpaying them because our, our city residents are already paying county general taxes that help augment their budget. So, I think that what we are paying them to come into the city should be roughly thirty percent less than what we pay them, than what they pay us to go to the county. Does that make sense? Okay.
And you guys have minutes in those meetings, right? Somebody's taking minutes?
Yes, there's, there's a summary.
Summary? Could we get that last one?
That'd be public record. Chief, can you take care of that and get it through?
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, could we get that? That way we can see it, and I bet you that'll catch one.
Have some motion?
We have a motion.
I, I, I don't know. We need a motion or if we just direct the attorney?
You don't necessarily need a motion, but.
Okay, so if we could just, if the gentleman are in agreement.
Y'all agree?
Okay.
Done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to a city attorney report and update.
Okay, so, I am very pleased to be with you all here tonight. I love the discussion, um, and I appreciate the back and forth. I will be the, I, I hope that you feel the same, because I will be here at your next meeting as well. Danielle wanted me to give you all a reminder. We know it's only been a week, so no pressure to give us any feedback tonight, but just be thinking about how we want to resolve the alcohol ordinance five hundred feet from churches. Um, you can feel free to send Danielle or I an email, um, and we can compile the feedback, um, but I just.
On the agenda, and we just kind of missed it, didn't we?
Was it on the agenda?
I saw it somewhere.
I don't think.
No, it's not on the agenda.
We just got a letter.
Okay.
Yeah, we did get a letter. Did y'all get that letter?
Yes.
So, it doesn't have to be resolved tonight, but.
I read over the two that Danielle sent. Orlando's got a lot. Come on on. Titusville's a little bit more straightforward. My, my preference in terms of direction there would be that we leave that decision between the business owner and the church community and come to the commission if need be. I'm hesitant for it to be as Titusville had a downtown or a CRA district, because if that expands and there's a church that's already there, I'm afraid that that would take away their voice or their ability to weigh in on that. I think that, you know, so long as the faith-based community has no problem, I don't know why the city would, you know? But if they're already there, I would be afraid that if we did, did a broad definition in that regard. But I think that a business or, um, a prospective business owner should be able to petition an existing church for a variance on that five hundred-foot setback. I don't, me personally, I don't have any interest in modifying the setback for schools, but this is, this is just for churches. That would be my preference. I don't know how the gentleman feels.
Yeah, probably the only thing that I would like to, um, add is the fact of you got to actually own it. If the church owns it, if they're leasing the building, they don't have no say in what happens.
Yeah, because I was thinking with yours, that even, that wouldn't help Blue Star out at all.
If we had to lease.
Because Victory Springs, they're the ones, they showed up last time on, and most of their.
Yeah, and they don't own the property. I agree with what you're saying, but, Mr. Vice Mayor, that it should be the property owner. You know, most of the longstanding churches here, they own their property. But if you're temporarily there while you're building another place, I like that, yeah, I agree.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that, because you shouldn't have to penalize that business because somebody's just leasing.
Right, and then for a year or two, because they're building somewhere else.
Exactly. They will be leaving.
Yeah.
I think if you don't change something and have it in our books, then it, you're, you're going to make it very, uh, difficult for businesses to come in.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you think that that's enough to give them the option to appeal?
I don't know. I'm, I'm actually a huge fan of the, having a entertainment kind of district. I know that's not the right word, because that's going to scare a lot of people off, but, um, you know, having a district to where these businesses come in, our tourism comes in, they eat, they hang out, you know?
Yeah.
And then maybe that doesn't, and I, I understand there is two churches, I think, right there that would make a, a difference in that, in that immediate district. But I don't know. I think that's about as simple as you can get. You know, and you talk about having, involving the churches, and we could talk to the churches, but at the same time, we're, we're up here as city commissioners. I think these are decisions that we're supposed to be making.
Is, is where Blue Star Grill is part of the CRA district? Does it go up that far?
I don't think so.
So, that wouldn't cover what, what they're.
I mean, we can add something in there, it'll be, you know, but I just think as a whole, because there, there are people. They want, they want to have a business, and it's easier to start a business than a, it's supposed to be easier to start it in a smaller town. I don't know.
I still feel that that faith-based community should have some say, though. I mean, they've been there longer than a new business. I think if you're coming into the community, you should, you know, respect the folks that are there, too.
I, I, I agree. I, for me, involving the church and, and government business is something that, I don't know, it's kind of touchy.
It's a property owner. Yeah, and we've got an ordinance that has something specific to their property ownership.
I agree. I'm just saying that it's, you know, these churches, a lot of the churches aren't going to be in tune with having more businesses that serve alcohol come in.
They might not be. That's true.
So.
It, but Kirsten, correct me if I'm wrong, there's, this kind of restriction is pretty common.
It, it is pretty common. I think what makes it a problem here is just sort of your layout and the scattering of churches.
Yeah.
Well, I think just to start the step, let's just do leasing and own, and then if we need to redjust later, we can redjust.
Yeah, I mean, we could always modify it. Again, it's just an ordinance.
But that's at least one step to get one business that we know is interested right now to go ahead to do it.
Well, we got one business that's affected by this footage right now.
Right.
By what, just what, fifty feet, so to speak?
Yeah.
Right, so the lease and the, and the ownership helps that business that you're talking about.
We can start there.
Okay, we can bring that back. Thank you.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
City manager report and update.
We saw tonight, we've just been working on budgets. Thank you for the direction. That's really going to help staff out and moving forward with our plans. That's all I got. That budget hearing is the next meeting, September eighth and September twenty-second.
Commission comments?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I've only got a few things. Chief Shepherd, sir, happy birthday. We appreciate you. We love that you're here. We celebrate you every day. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to follow up with you on the letter for Winn-Dixie. I know everybody's been busy. Sent in a letter to, to all, for, to keep it Winn-Dixie. Could we, um, maybe direct the attorney's office also? Maybe to draft a letter there, since you're already going to be writing some letters, just to get that out there. I'd appreciate it. And the only other thing that I've got is, I've been thinking about this a long time, and we had some ideas about how to celebrate our veterans in High Springs a couple of years ago, and it would have involved money, and we didn't have it, and something very serendipitous happened yesterday. And I would like to, with your permission, gentlemen, since we've been doing budgets and we're doing the hard work, and it's difficult to do, between now and Veterans Day, I would like to have, um, the opportunity to introduce and celebrate a High Springs hero at the beginning of every meeting. We've got a lot of them here in town, and I think it would be really, really cool to be able to tell some of those personal stories. Just leading up to Veterans Day for September and October, and the first meeting in November.
Love that.
If, if you guys wouldn't mind, I'd really love to do something like that. And if you have any ideas of people, that maybe we could highlight.
Absolutely.
Um, maybe get that information to Angela. I've got a couple. I mean, we've got, we've got two sitting right up here with us, so.
We'll do a video and get it out on social media.
Oh, that would be awesome.
Get people to submit names.
Uh, no, sir, I think you're, one of your veterans should be in it, and, or another one of your veterans should be in it, so that would be great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. That's all I got.
Um, our employee of the, well, we actually got a double hitter this week, our employee of the, our employees of the week is Ms. Phyllis and Ms. Timmer from the building department. A citizen wrote a letter about them, and they said that they helped out, and they were very glad with the services that were provided by those two individuals, so you all are our employees of the week. My only other thing is, I know we talked about, um, last meeting, giving you all some, ideas for negotiations for the trash contract. Um, in that contract, if we choose with Waste Pro, I'm sorry, if we choose with Waste Pro, can we, um, do we have a, um, a fee if they miss trash currently? Do we bill them?
There are certain standards that they have to meet, but I don't think that there's a, I could look at the contract.
'Cause Gainesville has this like fee that if you miss trash, they, they bill you for missing a pickup.
Mr. Mayor, they do, we do have that in the contract, we have not had to do that so far with them. There's a word for it, and it's escaping me right now, uh, damages, what damages?
Do we know the.
Liquidated damages?
Liquidated, thank you, liquidated damages clause is in there, yes, but we have not, to this point, had to bill them for that.
Do we know the process of how that goes, because I mean, I know we hear that, but I, since that last meeting, I did get a lot of citizens that said they do have issues with Waste Pro. They just don't bother to call, because we live from GFL, now we're at Waste Pro, so what's the point of keep calling, 'cause we only got two trash companies to go against?
When, when, when the billing department or Public Works receives a complaint from a customer that there was a missed pickup or anything like that, it's logged into a mutually shared database that goes directly to Waste Pro, and then they respond to, they take action as needed. If there's repeat, usually the liquidated damages, what I've saw, what I saw with Waste Pro anyway, I mean, with GFL, when we did charge them, it was because there were multiple repeat offenses in the same idea, or if we have, you know, a whole neighborhood got missed, or a whole road got missed, and that was an ongoing problem. But if people don't tell us, we don't know, and then we can't tell them, and obviously, we can't look for liquidated damages. So if people do have issues, they should call and let us know, and that way it can be tracked, and then we can, we have record of it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that, um, to Diane's point, the software is called TrackEas, and any complaint that comes in, they actually have a mobile app too, any complaint that comes in, we log it. It has a date and timestamp, and it'll tell you the time elapsed, and then there's a field that we, that both parties can see if that issue has been resolved, and we can circle back and say, hey, we put this ticket in twenty-four hours ago, Bob Smith on 242nd didn't have his trash picked up, I don't see a resolve on here, what's going on, and we can follow back up with them and say, you know, what's going on? How come this wasn't addressed? And again, it's accountability for their people, and it also allows us to hold Waste Pro in general accountable. When we had GFL, there was no system like that in place, it was just a matter of, um, the, Amy and Jennifer at the time in Public Works calling GFL or emailing GFL and saying, hey, here were the complaints that we had, but then there was, there was really nothing beyond that, whereas with this TrackEas program, again, we can follow along and see everything that has happened. So if people are having an issue, then absolutely they need to call, they need to communicate, because if we don't know there's a problem, we can't fix it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'd like to ask one other question. The gentleman that had problems with his fire assessment that spoke at the last meeting, did we ever get that resolved to know what that is, I'm sorry to, to bypass and not have any comment, but it just hit me that he brought that to our attention.
The guy that you said he didn't live in the city?
Yes.
Everything shows that he lives in the city, so he disagrees, and he's gonna have an attorney take a look at it. But everything shows for years he's been in the city.
Okay, good enough, thank you.